Good morning and thank you for joining us for round two of the budget workshops. This morning I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open his pledge and pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for your love for us today. We're grateful for the help that we have, abilities that we have to get around and come out to these meetings, take care of the business of the county. We ask your blessings upon this meeting, Lord, each person who presents, Lord, each agency, and, Lord, we ask your blessings upon this board, that we might make good decisions, that we might be able to understand the budget as well as possible, so that we might be able to make the best decisions for our county and district. Lord, we ask your blessings upon those who are suffering loss for the Summers family, Lord, especially as they prepare to say goodbye this week. Pray, God, that you would just comfort them. I pray, Lord, for my mother, who's in the hospital right now. God, that you would give her comfort, Lord, help her to be able to get through the situations she's in. Lord, we just ask your blessings upon us, so that we might glorify you in our decisions. Pray, Jesus.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, speakers. All right. First on our agenda is the Ark of North Florida. You've got Ms. Beverly and Michael.
Do you hear me?
It goes again.
Hopefully. Nope, there we go.
Is it working?
To get close enough, yes. Not used to this public stuff. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us and supporting us each and every year for the services that we provide to your constituents and their families. As all of you know, or maybe not, we have two group homes here in Swanee County that serve 16 people. We're very proud of that, and it allows people to live in our community, and they're from this community, rather than living in an institutional setting. The community supports that we provide in the community includes advocacy. I've had numerous families come to me this past year, and I worked in concert with the Sheriff's Office to help an individual with disabilities, young men who become homeless. And we actually were instrumental in, and again, with the victim advocate, in getting this individual services, that there's a huge waitlist, but we were successful in that as we partnered. Again, advocacy, day services, personal supports, we go into people's homes. This allows their family members to go to work, pay their bills, and give back to the community. So I think what we do is paramount to all of your constituents here in Swanee County. Michael is on our board, and he's also a participant, and he just wanted to share his thoughts that he has.
Hi, my name is Michael Campbell. Thank you for your support last year. It helped so much. Thank you for your donation last year. We have enjoyed many meaningful activities like bowling, going to the movies, swimming, and music at Dowling Park. In the future, we would like to go to University of Florida games, more shopping trips, flea markets, beaches, and more paying jobs. We will appreciate whatever amount you give us. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
One of the things that you mentioned was work. We do provide work opportunities for them on a fair wage, just minimum wage, probably broke. And it's important in what we do, we have packaging for some of the cell car lots here in town. How to pull down like that?
Could you speak up, you alone?
Okay, I don't mind. I have a big. And they make minimum wage doing these jobs. We don't pay commensurate wage because we don't believe in it. We actually pay minimum wage. But you guys have any questions?
I don't have any. Do y'all have any?
No.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Do y'all want to hear these requests and decide on them as you go down, or do you want to decide on them after everybody's presented?
I prefer that we do like we used to do, we'd go all the way down the list and then convey.
Okay. Is that fine with everyone?
Agreed with that.
All right. Next up is Swanee Valley Genealogical Society. Well, I'm sorry, I got off, I got two lists in front of me. Go ahead with that, I'm looking at the wrong list. Now, go ahead, I called you up, go ahead.
They got us here.
I got one list with the request and then the agenda, and I was looking at the request. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. But first of all, we do want to thank you for your assistance and help in the past. You know, I think most of you have been next door to see what we do offer there. We're the repository of the family history for this area and all other areas, not just Swanee County, but we represent, doesn't matter where you're from. We have facilities to do research on family history and just.
Eric.
They don't, I don't need it.
Right.
But if you haven't been over, I do encourage you to come and take a look and see what we can have to offer. We have some excellent people there that are well qualified to assist in your genealogical work there. We have several people there on Tuesdays and Thursdays each week, and we just, we think we offer a good service to those that are interested in their family history. And we thank you for what you have done and what you do.
Thank you.
As I said, we do appreciate all that done, and we, of course, like everyone else, we strive each year to try to give the best services we can. Now, this past year, as y'all know, our fundraisers did not go as well as we had hoped, but we got rained down at Christmas on the square. But we're doing the best we can, and we appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll just say thank you. I stopped in the other day just to say hey, and I left with about three pages worth of family tree that Ms. Jenny pulled up for me, so I appreciate it.
It's habit for me.
It is.
It's great.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. I'm back on the right list, so we'll get back in the right order. The DAV, Mr. Rick Shudy. Welcome, sir.
Thanks, sir. I'm the commander of the Civil American Veterans who are a private one national, and we have local chapters. Our local chapters dedicated to helping our veterans, period. The money is, any money that we have, we go to the individual veterans. We have, in the past, we've had different fundraisers, and we've limited on that. However, we use every dollar we have to benefit a veteran in need. And when I say that, and I know Mr. Hill has volunteered his service to move the neighbor's yard, we do things like that. We may go out and actually mow a veteran's yard. We take care of veterans that are getting out of rehab, getting out of nursing homes, going home, and their conditions aren't quite right. We pay for cleaning up a residence in order to comfort the veteran. We've done everything that we could on things like that. A lot of our members, because we do not have the funding, a lot of our members take money out of their pocket. I've done it myself. Where a veteran comes through town and is down on his luck, jump aheads, failed to send his check, and he can't pay his out of gas, he can't make it to Jacksonville. I bought a young kid, sent back from Iraq, I take a gas to make sure he made his station and wasn't considered a one. Those are the kinds of things we do. We're grassroots. We don't, we're not trying to do what the national does. We want it, and we're required to keep it at home. Now, in the past, Hamilton County has helped us. We serve Hamilton, Swanee, and Lafayette. And Hamilton has helped us, and we're asking, we've never asked of you before, but we are now asking, if you can see it in the budget, we would greatly appreciate anything that you can do. Any questions on what we do?
Any questions?
I don't have any.
No. Those are just, thank you for your service, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, Historical Commission. Just can't leave it alone, can you?
I can't.
Take ours.
No, you own yours.
Sorry, Don. I'm already sharing with you.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Weird being on this side instead of up there with y'all, but I appreciate the time that y'all have given us and all these other entities to come before you to beg for money. But I'll tell you a little bit about the Historical Commission, established in 1980 between the city and county, an interlocal agreement that created us to basically present and do whatever we can to help preserve Swanee County's history. We are an all-volunteer group. We are appointed by the city and the county. I've got several of my members here, including Commissioner Fleming. So lots of things. I've sent a letter to y'all several months ago to discuss our funding. A few things I wanted to point out in the three hours that I have to talk, so I was told, or three minutes, whichever, one of the two. A couple of things we do, we are, on our website, we have several things we're posting. We do several tours, historical tours, walking tours. We recently set up an app where you can actually download it on your phone and walk around part of downtown and listen to stories about those buildings, and we're continuing to expand that. One of the other things we have done recently is we've hired two part-time curators, Susan Fennell and Hannah O'Donnell, here in the back, to help operate the museum. That was one of the things we'd requested last year, and we were able to get after taking over the museum less than two years ago from the Museum Association. So we are glad to have them on board. They are very energetic, they are doing lots of good things in the museum. And if you have not been in there in the last month or two, you need to, because we are doing lots of good things. And we're also continuing to rent out the front office space and also the back dock rental to help with our funding, and lots of presentations from our different members. Again, we love history, want to tell a lot of people about the history that we've got. We have our funding requesting, which is the same as last year. In addition, we have, I believe, $7,500 that were set aside several years ago by the county for roofing repairs. We have been trying to get some historical grants for that roofing repair. However, this past year, the state has upped the matching funds required, and so right now it's not something we can do. But we're asking for those $7,500 to help with some roofing repairs instead of replacing the roof, which is what we were really wanting. But I don't have anything else to talk about. If y'all have any questions?
What's the match that they're?
It was $45,000, that was two years ago. Now, I think it's doubled or tripled. I don't have to go back and see the number, but it was basically, it was a large amount, and so we have not applied this year for it because we know that's, money's tight. We're going to try to look for some alternative funding sources, but we're hoping that $7,500 that's in the budget already can help do some of the repairs. We've got several leaks in the museum roofing, so that's where that extra money was coming from. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Swanee Valley Foresees.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm going to tell you a little bit about our program. We have the Head Start Program. Nationwide Head Start and Early Head Start serves over 1 million children and their families. Head Start helps families get out of the cycle of poverty. Our mission all along has been to assist our community's most vulnerable children and families, those living in poverty. Swanee Valley Foresees is the area grantee for Head Start and Early Head Start in Columbia, Hamilton, Lafayette, and Swanee Counties. Our agency serves 426 children and their families. In Swanee County, we have Early Head Start Program at Azalea Park that serves 56 families. Our Head Start Program also serves 66 families at the Live Oak Learning Center, and we also have a Head Start Center in Branford where we serve 17 families. Our program targets low-income families at or below the federal poverty level. Foster children and homeless children are automatically eligible for our program. Children with disabilities, regardless of family income, are also automatically eligible. Our program is serving the neediest of the needy children each year in Swanee County. Head Start is not a daycare. Head Start is the sole source in our area for providing comprehensive, individualized child and family services, including education, nutrition, health services, and family services. Head Start sets the stage for everything that follows in life by helping children build a strong foundation for success in school. We extend an invitation to you to visit our centers if you haven't already and see for yourself the difference we are making in Swanee County. We are requesting $10,000 in donations. In the past, you all have given us $5,000, probably five or six years ago, we were receiving the $10,000 amount. We, our program is required to obtain 20% of funding needs in matched dollars, which is approximately $1.2 million. Although we are able to obtain some of this through volunteer donations of time and space, we really do need cash contributions as well to support our classrooms. And I did hand you all a flyer. I didn't mention that at the beginning, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Any questions?
Y'all have any questions?
I don't have any.
How many counties is that $1.2 million cover? How many different?
The match, it's four counties.
Four counties?
Yes, sir.
And how much out of county funds do you typically get percentage-wise versus individual donations?
Oh, goodness, you asked me a question I'm not sure about. Maybe, let's see, roughly $10,000 for each county.
Okay, and the rest comes all from donations?
That we've received, and the rest of it comes from reduction in lease payments for space that we have, land donations, we have modular buildings on them for our sites, and then we have volunteers that come into our classrooms to help.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Sorry. You always, I wasn't sure about that.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Afraid to touch this, but I'm short. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Kathy White. I'm Executive Director for Vivid Visions. Vivid Visions has been serving Swanee County since 1995. This past year, Vivid Vision served 90 women and children through our shelter and approximately 40 through our outreach. They also had 4,582 days of shelter. With that, of course, we provide food, clothing, advocacy, court advocacy, transportation to and from different appointments, doctor's appointments, also trying to help them look for housing, employment, and various other things in the county. We do a lot of referrals for various organizations, Swanee River Economic Council, United Way, so that they can try and become stable and provide for themselves and their families. Vivid Visions is asking for $25,000 again this year, and we are asking that, trying to meet our match for their various grants that we receive. We have, we're required to have a match of $81,000 this year. So of that, we receive cash, other that we can use for match is $64,000, so we run in a little bit of a shortfall there. Now, we do use some in-kind donations as well, so that definitely helps. But we are, have been struggling the last few years. We're inching up in getting where we need to be, but we need to be able to have at least one to two months of sustainability if something was to happen. This is coming from our funders, from our coalition and so on. So we are asking for that. We do also various fundraisers. Of course, this next year, we're going to do it again, we're going to have a softball game, and we definitely will be inviting county commissioners to come on board and participate as well. We also do barbecues throughout the year, as well as different small other things that we do. Questions?
Any questions for?
I'm glad you brought up the softball, because I was going to, they did a fundraiser last several years, the city versus county softball tournament. It's primarily been, like, what, fire department?
Fire department, city employees, city and county.
But I told her we would, and I'm speaking for all of us, hopefully.
Game on.
Might, would like to jump in and take all that, so I'd like to participate, and if y'all would like to, I told her to keep us in mind next go around.
Okay, good. We'll be putting that together.
Practice pitching a little better.
I thought you would be an awesome pitcher.
Yeah.
With being catching.
Great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I would just like to also say that we're the champion.
Well, that was the whole point, we were going to take it from y'all.
This is true. And there is a trophy, so they are carrying that trophy for the next year, which is the, what they call, I guess, you all had the Oakland bucket between the two counties.
Trust me, I watched them last year.
Yeah.
We could take them, that's the only reason I volunteered, just.
Mr. Chairman, how many, I want to ask a question. How many, how many employees do y'all employ? This money, do it pay for your employees, some of the employees?
Yes, well, it, this money that we get from y'all is basically from, for other, for our match and stuff. For our employees, we have about 13 employees. We have one employee that is funded by grants, by a grant, and she's actually now in Branford. The school down there, the high school, has provided us office space, so she is working as an outreach advocate there and also assisting with primary prevention and teaching the youth. Then we have a CPI advocate, which is co-located, she works over at the DCF office, and she provides services for, between, she's liaison between the victims and DCF. And then, but most of our funds for our shelter employees, all of it is 100% Boca funded through the Victims of Crime Act and the State Attorney's Office.
Mr. Chairman, you.
Yes, sir.
One question. You said something that I want to make sure I clarify, because you said you're requesting $25,000, but on our request form it says 29,705.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not that I want to bring it up, but I wanted to, if we were to approve, obviously what we approve is based upon what you request, and a lot of it's done on paperwork, so I want to clarify that, number one. And number two, if you can tell me, if the justification for any increase is just what you said, based upon, completely based upon matching funds, are they increasing, the matching increasing at all, or are you bringing a problem with county resources?
Well, we, in order to, to expend or be able to obtain all of our grants, if we don't reach our match, then we don't receive the funding. So we were awarded $212,000 this past year with Boca. We were only able to obtain about $150,000, and that being because we didn't have enough funds upfront to spend in order to expend, you know, spend it out and then get reimbursed, so that's a challenge. We also use the funds from the county to purchase, you know, supplies and stuff like that for the shelter as well, so that.
Final question is, are you requesting 25 or 29,705?
It's 29,705. I apologize. I went with what we had gotten last year, is what I went with, and I apologize for that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any. Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Meridian Behavioral Healthcare.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am filling in for Dr. Labarta, our president and CEO. My name is Alan Pollan. I am Senior Vice President of our Clinical and Community Services at Meridian. She did have an out-of-town scheduled event, and with the reschedule here, she regretfully cannot attend. So as you may know, Meridian was established in 1971 as North Flor, Central Florida's Community Behavioral Health Center. We are accredited by CARF, which is a council for accreditation of rehabilitation facilities. We do primarily mental health and substance abuse treatment. We refer to that as a full, we have a full continuum of services. That goes all the way from prevention all the way through acute long-term care. So we have, that kind of runs from prevention, outreach in the schools, to outpatient residential services for substance abuse treatment, and also for people struggling with severe and persistent mental illness. We also work closely with Child Welfare to help families maintain their children in the home safely, and also to reunify if the children have been taken out due to abuse and neglect. We also offer supportive housing and vocational services. As far as, on the next page, access to comprehensive care, we are averaging around 10 to 15 days initially at the beginning of the year. However, we have reduced that to five days for people calling into services. We've, emergencies can always be handled the same day for possible Baker Acts or Marchman Acts and emergency screening. Our telehealth, which we've been expanding rapidly, allows our, allows our clients to access care for specialty providers such as a psychiatrist that are in different areas. So we know that as quickly as we can engage that person from when they call us, we'll have a better outcome for success. The next page has a lot of breakdowns on who we actually see and the percentages. Without going through all the numbers, I would just like to point out that 32% of the children that we're seeing, 32% of the overall patients we're seeing are children, and some are as young as preschool. And also, as far as the male-female breakdown, we do see more females than males, and you can see the numbers there. However, we do see more, more boys than girls in that age group, for the juvenile age group. A lot of, and a lot of those referrals are coming from the schools for behavioral problems. These, these statistics that we have are actually through the third quarter of this last fiscal year. We are still currently gathering up data for the full year. However, I will say, we did pull in the data for, as far as our service depth, for the overall services. We had, ended up with a total of, for adults, 1,239 people that we saw. That was a 15% increase. Juvenile, we're seeing increases across the board. Juvenile's, the final data was 570 people seen, which is a 29% increase. And for the total, with those combined, we served a combination, a total of 1,809, which was a 19% increase. Another point on this chart is our penetration rates. So basically, you're looking at, you've got your overall penetration, which is about usually around 4%, 5% of the general population, but when you look at the people who are living in poverty, it's much higher, and that increased to 22% for Swanee County. So just to reiterate, for this past year, we've seen, at the end of fiscal year, third quarter of fiscal year, 2018, 19, total 1,519 residents, breakdown, 1,065 adults, 454 children, and you can see the level of care that they've been accessing and the numbers related to those. Are there any questions so far on any of this material?
I don't have any. Y'all have any?
No.
Okay, thanks. So on the next page, again, I think the key word that we're looking at this year is increases, as far as this discussion goes. You are seeing for acute care, that we had a 42% increase in children that were, had to come for emergency screening and admitted to our crisis stabilization unit, which is alarming. I will tell you, though, however, it's similar to other counties that we're serving and also across the state, and we attribute this to the Parkland shootings and being, having a high sensitivity for children who we think are unstable, and also the suicide rate that's been increasing significantly for children of that age group. Even though we may not have our residential substance abuse treatment here in Swanee County, you're absolutely, the residents still access that, and we did have seven people admitted to our residential treatment center, and we also had two moms come to our pre and postnatal residential care, which is longer term, six to nine months. and we also had, um, two moms come to our pre and postnatal, uh, residential care, which is longer term, six to nine months, so they can work on their addiction issues, as well as learn positive parenting to be able to stay with their children. Through some grants, we've also been able to serve an additional thirty-three families in Suwannee County. And that is where we actually have intensive wraparound services for those families. We go in with therapy, a case manager to help link them to community resources. And we also have a mentor to spend time with the children, to break them out of their behavioral patterns and learn those successful, positive behaviors. And, uh, also that has a nursing and psychiatric component. As far as the breakdown by diagnoses, we're, uh, most prevalent is depression. Substance abuse is affecting about twenty-five percent of the people that we're serving from Suwannee County, and forty percent of those people coming in with substance, before substance abuse treatment are, have, carrying an opioid di-diagnosis. And that was, so for, that's a total of a hundred and three residents, and also bipolar disorder is coming in around eighteen percent. Most of the people coming in do have complex needs, and often it's the expectation that they have not only substance abuse, but also mental health issues. And trauma, um, is definitely, um, comes in as far as post-traumatic stress disorder. We have sixteen percent of, that actually receive that diagnosis, though trauma is a big impact. That contributes to substance abuse and other mental health issues. And I'm not gonna go, I would encourage you to read the, we have two case examples here. But basically, we had a mom that was arrested here in Suwannee County, who was fleeing a domestic violence situation. She was arrested because she was driving under the influence, had an eighteen-year-old, uh, child in the car. She's been able to get treatment, now she's working, she has an apartment, savings account, and, um, she attributes a big part of that to the treatment, uh, that she received. And on the second one, uh, young gentleman, what we'll call Jamie. Um, he had had a tough time, he had lost his mother when he was an infant, and he had just been through a lot of struggles in his life. He was, we were able to work with the school, he was on the credit recovery program, and we worked through his therapy, and he graduated in May, and he's looking for employment through vocational rehab. So, those are two personalized stories about some of the work we do here at Meridian. Also similar with children, that trauma definitely has, uh, high impact on, that could actually be the main source of what they're dealing with clinically for post-traumatic stress disorder, but also, um, we have the behavioral issues, contributes to behavioral issues, depression and adjustment problems. As far as the benefit of the dollars that are coming in, we do have, um, a very high, uh, percentage of people who have improved their functioning and reduction of symptoms. The national benchmarks for dealing with severe mental illness is about forty to sixty percent. All of our people that come in certainly, uh, have mental health issues or substance abuse, they may not be in that severe mental illness range, however, we're looking at eight, low eighties as far as improved functioning and redu-, reduction of symptoms. And just to put a little things in, to perspective, um, the national benchmarks, forty per six, sixty percent, as I mentioned, for, uh, recovering, and about forty to fifty percent for those with addiction. And if, if you look at for, in a, in a medical context, if something like diabetes or hypertension or other chronic illness, your, uh, recovery rate is about forty to sixty percent. So, it often mirrors what you're looking at for people with, with medical issues. So, we're not gonna get everybody, but we certainly know that, um, we're gonna get a high percentage of those to improve where they're, where they are. As far as what, what do the patients think of our services? We had ninety-three percent indicate treatment was helpful, seventy-one percent extremely helpful, similar to what they refer a family or friend, and, uh, overall satisfaction rating of four or five. And seventy-six of those were rating of five. Okay, so coming into the funding issue, just, uh, to, uh, we do accept a wide range of payers to ensure that the governmental funds are the payer of last resort. Indigent care is funded through the state and local matching funds, as well as Medicaid. So, we try to pull on those wherever we possibly can. So, for, for Suwannee County, eighty-four percent are at or below federal poverty guidelines. Only one percent that we saw were el-, ineligible for any subsidy. Thirty-five percent of the services, uh, that we provide it had been paid for with indigent care funding, which comes from the state and county match. Fifty percent of those were covered by Medicaid, and eighteen percent have some form of insurance. Unfortunately, though, that insurance only covers around five percent of the services that they actually need. So, you may, we will draw off the insurance, it's just the insurance plans often fall short. So, when we come up to, uh, this year's match, um, just as a review, uh, of course, there is the requirement for the match with, when we're drawing down state and federal funds. The expected match for two thousand twenty, uh, the big number would be two, two million, six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. And then as far as when it breaks down to Suwannee County, we, the proportion share is, is two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. And, uh, so that represents, uh, about, uh, when we pu-, we'll look at that, how is that broken down? So, we know that we were able to pull towards that thirty-four thousand through inpatient fees and insurance. All of that can be applied toward that required match. And then for, yeah, the county in two thousand nineteen provided sixty thousand. And also, the in-kind value of the, of the, uh, this, our county space for Meridian, and that was valued at fifty-six thousand, six hundred. And of course, if there's any kind of new appraisal, that would be higher for that value, we would certainly, you know, recognize that as well, the increase. So, currently the match from the, from the county commissioners and local fees is a hundred-and-fifty thousand, six hundred, which, uh, which is short of the match. This year, uh, mainly due to the, of the increase in services that we're, that we've been providing, we are requesting a five percent increase from the prior match. And that would bring the cash match from sixty thousand to sixty-three thousand, five hundred. I apologize for all the data, I think it is important to still break that down, so you can see who's getting the services, what and when, so thanks for bearing with that, with me through those.
Y'all have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, have a question on the, um, the building, I think we are providing space, correct?
Yes.
And then you're asking for, um, the value, like for the county, do some updates on that?
No, sir, uh, it would actually just be if you feel that at that point, at this point in time, that that, that building is worth more than the appraised fifty-six thousand, six hundred, we would cer-, if they say it's worth sixty or sixty-five thousand, we would recognize that as an in-kind match to increase, get closer to the actual required match.
All right, any other ques-, yes, sir.
When was the, does anyone know when the last time we had that, um, that property appraised?
Two thousand fourteen.
I was fixing to say, I know it's been since two thousand twelve, but attorney says fourteen.
Five years.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, thank you for your time and your form of support, much appreciated.
Thank you. About to go off the wrong list again. Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Hillary Cannon, I'm the executive director of the Suwannee County Chamber. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning with you guys. Chamber's extremely busy these days, uh, we're about to start our Leadership Academy, uh, in August. Our Big Impact Magazine is about to come out, uh, we're holding Mix and Mingles every other month, many of you have come to those, we appreciate the support on that. Having a membership drive in September, and then, of course, our Business of the Year Dinner is in October, and Christmas on the Square is in December. We're busy, um, and that's thanks to the support of the county, uh, that we're progressing forward. Our vision, of course, is to advance the economic growth and vitality of our members, and to develop a broader interest in our community. We consider our office the front door of Suwannee County, and we feel as if we are an extension of the, of the county, and our goal is to make this area the best place to live, work, play and grow. Your investment in the Chamber is vital to the ability to sustain, succeed and grow. So, on behalf of the board members, and our members and myself, wanna thank you for your support in the past and ask for your continued support in the future. We're again, uh, requesting for the same amount that we did last year of twenty thousand.
Any questions?
All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. I will add, you did a much better job presenting than the last director, Chamber Braden. All right, next up, Hooked on Heroes, Ron Cadel. Jimmy, she kept it short and sweet, just straight to the point.
Yeah.
Good morning, I'm Ron Cadel, president of Hooked on Heroes. Well, we appreciate all your continued support we've been getting from y'all, and we'd like, uh, say thank you for everything that you have helped us with. This year so far, April the fifth, we took, or April the sixth, excuse me, we took a hundred-and-thirty veterans and used sixty-seven boats. Since then, we have picked up another hundred-and-thirty-five new veterans to bring our total of veterans up to five-hundred-and-fifty-three that we have that wanna go fishing. October sixth is our next event. We will be taking approximately between one-hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred veterans out on a fishing trip. We have, at this time, added a little extra for the veterans, thanks to the Sheriff St. John. He is now coming down and helping out by, uh, doing a, uh, chicken and rice dinner for our veterans when they come in. We are slowly and gradually getting larger and larger, and we need all the help we can get. We appreciate any help that you can give us, and, uh, we are, right now, our expansion is a-at, at the point of, we're almost at the far as we can go until we can get larger with more help and this type thing. And, uh, we would appreciate anything you could do to help us with. Is there any questions or anything?
Just clarification on your dates.
Uh, October sixth will be our next date.
That's gonna be a Sunday?
I know it's Saturday.
Okay, that'd be October the fifth, I believe.
Oh, October fifth, yeah, April sixth was our last, yeah, October fifth, excuse me. Yeah, that'll be our next one. Our goal is to take two-hundred if possible, but I've gotta get up a hundred boats to do that.
Well, seeing that my boat has been updated, new, almost, uh, I'll be in this one.
Okay, I appreciate that. Don, I got you, okay, and I hope we got Ricky again.
If you haven't had a chance to participate in this event, um, you'll benefit from it. It's just, it's neat to watch them get out there. Some of them, I, I've gone out before and had, uh, two World War II vets, uh, and two Vietnam vets, but one, two of them in their nineties and two of them in their seven, late seventies, and watch them get to arguing. It's fun.
Even if you can't, if you don't have a boat, you just wanna volunteer your time and help, we appreciate it. Because we can use, we can always use the help, because we're, with, uh, getting as large as we're getting, we can use all the help we can get, uh, just to come down and work it if you don't have a boat that you can use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
Yeah, a quick story, I had those, the, the, the two ninety-year-olds, uh, World War II, and then the two, that were in their seventies.
The two seventy-year-olds were giving me a fit about being a young'un, and, uh, one of the ninety-year-olds looked at him and said, "Shut up, son, I got kids your age."
All right, so that was all of those, now, um, if y'all wanna, we'll just start at the top of the list and go down, or, I've got, kinda marked, uh, my recommendations are what I wanted to do as we were going down, I don't know if anyone else did. Can't help it, can you?
I can't, I'm trying to fix it.
All right, we'll start with the Historical Commission, they requested the same that they had last year, sixteen thousand. Anybody in favor of that, or?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chairman.
I am too.
I'm good.
Anyone else?
Do I have one more?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Anyway, there's agree that's good with that. Next on the list was, um, Suwannee Valley Genealogical Society, they submitted the same requests of, uh, two thousand dollars. I'm fine with that.
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Yes, sir, I support that.
Ark of, uh, North Florida, the same request of thirty thousand, I'm fine with that.
Good with it.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Suwannee Valley of Four Seas submitted, uh, a request of ten thousand. Last year's was five thousand. I'm good at keeping it at current levels of five thousand.
I am too, I didn't, I think that, uh, they, as much, uh, as they do, they can get the funds. So, I'm good at keeping it where it's at.
I'm good.
Anyone else?
Ms. Fleming, you fine?
Uh, we got three. Let's see, Hooked on Heroes submitted the same request they did last year at fifteen hundred.
I'm good.
I'm good with that.
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Yes.
Suwannee County Chamber of Commerce submitted the same request of twenty thousand, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yes, I'm good.
I'm good.
Vivid Visions submitted an increase of about four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars from twenty-five thousand last year. I'm fine in supporting their increase, if anyone else is.
Yes, um, that's four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars?
Yes, sir.
If, if that would help her, help them attain their full funding, then I'm, I'm okay with it, but, um, I, I'm not exactly certain that that's gonna be enough, but, um, I'm okay with this year if we need to.
Anyone else?
Well, you got my blessings on that.
Sir?
You got my blessings on it.
Okay.
The twenty-nine.
Yes, ma'am. Meridian Behavioral, the sixty thousand is already in the budget, they've been cre-, asked for an increase of the, of thirty-five hundred. I'm fine with leaving it at the sixty thousand.
My question was, is, is, would that be, if we did increase it, would it go into our budget?
The thirty-five hundred would.
Okay, I'm, I'd prefer to leave it right where it's at, this year.
Anyone else, everyone else, fine with that?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Pravat, do you think, uh, it was five years ago that we did the rate study, that it would benefit us to do another one, or?
I have a comment to go along with it.
Okay.
We did a rate study back in. My only comment is, you know, when you look at the, the rate study that we actually did back in two thousand fourteen, um, the value of the building at the time, at the in-kind contribution, including value of the building and other little things that went along with it, uh, was sixty-seven thousand dollars. In the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget, uh, we submitted that as the in-kind. When Meridian submitted it back to us for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget, they cut it, unilaterally cut it to fifty-six, sixty, as you see now. So, we've been under, you know, what, they've been giving us a, a.
So, we could submit the same numbers that we had in fourteen and have an increase?
Yes.
All right. Can we send that back to them?
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
All right. And last one on the list is the DAV, this is the first time that they've made a request to us in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, and I'm in support of that.
I'm good.
Yes, sir.
I think everybody is. All right, what'd that bring us to, around a hundred and one thousand on the outside agencies?
A hundred and three thousand, a hundred and four thousand.
You wanna do the outside agencies, and I'll do contingency. What they just approved on outside agencies.
Five, seven oh five.
Seven fifty or seven oh five?
Seven oh five.
105, 705.
Correct. 105, 705?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that put us to 105, 705 you just approved.
105.
And that puts your contingency at 466, 333. We finally got rid of that $38.
Where'd it go?
705.
705, and...
What'd you say the contingency was, 460?
466, 333.
466?
333.
And where did that $38 go?
Well, there's the $5 came off of it. They went down to 33.
We finally got rid of some of it.
I know where he can get the other 33. Personally?
What are y'all getting different than that? Because I'm coming up with 100,000, $1,705. I don't...
Move your 10 for Swanee Valley Four Seas.
Vivid Visions off.
Make it 5.
That's right, that's why I didn't add that 5 in. Nope, that's what I was missing. Okay, now we're there.
Sorry to cut you off there.
No, I just, I had scratched the 10 out, and I didn't move the 5 into its spot. That's what I was missing. All right. Everybody satisfied with that? We'll move on to, we got through everything the last budget workshop. So today, we'll just move forward with any cuts or anything anybody wants to add back in. But before we get into that, it's just a little bit before 10, take a break. Thank you all.
All right, everybody back.
We'll go ahead and get started. I've just got a couple of quick things. I just, this isn't a cut that we can make or have a number for today, but I need everybody to go back to their budget and look at their insurance rate. We had a reduced rate this year. I think it went down by 2%. And I believe some of the budgets submitted it with 2% decrease and some did not. I need everybody to submit it with the 2% decrease, and whatever's left over needs to go back to our contingency.
Mr. Chairman, would that be the health insurance, or would that be the?
Health insurance.
Health insurance.
What was it, Nina? This year's rate was 8,800 a person, and some budgeted at 9,000 a person, or something like that?
Next year's rate.
Right.
Almost 91,000 that's unbudgeted.
All right. So we just need to make sure that everybody that submitted a budget has the correct rate this year, and that any, any that's not needs to be put back. Another thing, I had a question at the last workshop on moving 20,000 out of the TDC reserves into the TDC operational expenses. Now that Mr. Pravat's here, I was wondering if he could address whether or not we can do that or not?
Under the third cent, you can't put it back into operations.
But is there anything, in the conversation we had the other day, is there anything that they could use it for in their current year budget?
Y'all would have to make the change on designation for the, how you, how they spend the third cent. If I'm understanding what you're talking about, you know, it's divided, the three cents...
Right.
Into the purposes.
Right.
So the capital, the third cent is for capital improvements. And if you're going to make any change to the, where you're going to spend that third cent, y'all need to make a resolution to be able to do that.
So we have to do it under, do it by resolution? Can we, can we, if the board chooses, can we still budget it for that purpose? And then?
You can budget it now, as long as you can make that change, you know, before, before it's one.
I got you.
Y'all already spent it in the convention.
We spent all of it?
Well, I mean, almost. You got 170 for the land, and then 80 for the exhibition, too.
I thought we only put 150 out of, out of the TDC to the Convention Center.
Because we'd already, we'd already budgeted the 170.
The 170 was already in there from last year. That was a rollover.
A rollover.
Right, but y'all decided to use the 1% money for it now, instead of...
I know. We used, we rolled over the 170 from last year and added the 150 from TDC.
But last year, the 1% wasn't used for the 170.
I know. It should have, it, we're not, we weren't replacing the 170 with TDC money. We were just rolling over what was there last year, and then just adding 150 to it this year from TDC.
That's what I put down. I gave y'all back 170,000 out of your contingency, because I was going to use the 1% for the land.
So then you had a total of...
That's why you had the extra 170 back in there.
So you got a total of 320 going towards the Convention Center?
I, well, I'm, out of the 1%, now I do. 170 was just stuck in the budget last year, not against the 1%.
Right.
So when we discussed it last week, we decided to move the land over there, too, just to add 170 back to your contingency, but I can take it right back out.
That's going to reduce our contingency by another 170,000?
If I put, if it take, if I take it back out.
Well, no, if that's the case, I'll...
I don't think you earmarked the 1% last year for the land.
We didn't.
So that's why, when we talked about it last week, you said, "Well, why can't we use 1% for the land also?"
Right, meaning the 150 from this year. I thought, I thought the way we did it, we had 150 that rolled over, and that was in the budget.
170.
I mean, 170. And that showed up in the budget from last year, I thought, did it not?
It did, and it rolled.
And it rolled.
And it's part of your operating, but it's in the whole mix. It was in there when you had 1,553 as contingency left, what we started with.
But it was in the contingency and not in the, I thought you showed it as... But I thought we showed it spent. That's what we talked about the other day, didn't we?
No, it was in a, it was on a line.
Right.
To be carried forward.
I, when we talked last week, I said I didn't use it as balance forward. I thought it would be spent this year when I...
Right.
Budgeted the balance forward. So I was going to bring 170 over to offset this 170. But the 150 is different. It's to escrow for the center, the 170's for the land.
But the 170 didn't, should not have affected the contingency, because we didn't pledge it against...
We didn't, yeah.
We didn't... If you moved it back in... We didn't add it to the contingency, we just moved it forward. Yeah, if it would have been added back into contingency, it'd just been taken back out of contingency, so it'd have been zero balance.
So that's what I was trying to sit here and figure this morning. How much TDC contingency do we have left? I don't know what he's...
I thought we only took 150 out of it, and then... Go ahead, Ms. Jimmy.
That was what we had originally started with.
And then he took 120 out of, out of TDC.
We wound up...
You started with 30, so it was actually 120 you pulled out of that TDC, and I think...
No, we wound up doing the 150.
Yeah, we did.
Total, but you had pulled 30 out of the original county budget, I think.
I think, no, we put it back into the contingency.
We did, we did. The 30.
The 30, yeah. When she said we couldn't do the 20 towards the TDC budget, then we did the whole 150. But I didn't think we did the 170 from the TDC money. I thought that was rollover from last year.
Yes, I agree with that. It was rollover.
We didn't do it, but Thursday, y'all decided to do it.
So I think we missed, I think there was a misunderstanding in there.
First of all, can we do it?
No.
Then, that answers the question. We're not going to do it.
Let me, let me explain. Operational part...
You need a microphone.
No, what, I think what...
Because I told them they couldn't use it for his operating expenses.
If we, we can't, if, unless we re-designate it by resolution.
And even then, you have to be very specific, because the third cent is basically all for capital improvements. Sometime, there's, you know, there, it's a list of what they are. I don't have it right in front of me.
Right.
But a list of what they are. But if you're going to call that operational, or put it back up top, it's going to have to be something that's going to have to do with those, still those capital expenditures, or you won't be able to use it.
I got you.
Wouldn't the land be a capital expenditure?
That is. He wasn't, that's what Commissioner Richards wanted to ask him about, was, is it allowable for the land?
That's why we decided to get the land off of your option list and use the 1% for it, to give you back the, the 170 in your contingency.
If you set it aside, the board can't take it back. It's still designated as a capital expense somewhere to be used.
Well, it's in the budget, but I was going to use 1% money to pay for it, instead of their contingent, their contingency to pay for it, by bringing 1% balance forward over, because I thought they were going to spend it this year, and they didn't. And then we changed it to let the 1% pay for it. Can the 1% pay for the land?
So the intent is to have $320,000, 170 rolling forward that was in the prior year budget that didn't get spent, and the 150 to come from the TDC money.
Right.
That's the intent.
That was the intent, but that's not what I, I'm hearing. I think I'm hearing the 120 come out of the TDC money, right?
120 or 150?
Three, I mean, 320, I'm sorry.
170 plus 30 plus 150?
Yeah.
Not 30 plus 150. It would be a total of 150.
Well, the other day, she did it, was, because we already had 30 broke out.
Yeah.
So she did 30, then 120. And then the confusion at the last meeting, and...
It's the 170. That's the one that threw us all off.
I know that we did the 150 from the TDC. I was under the assumption that the 170 was a rollover from last year.
It is, but not using TDC 1%.
Right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, do you remember how, how our contingency began to shrink until she came back and added that 170 back in, and all of a sudden it, it went back up? That's the reason why she added it back in. She was able to add it back in. But I knew we were originally just going to take it right back out with the 30,000 and round it up to $200,000, and then we started talking about TDC contingencies. So that's when everything changed. I don't remember taking, having discussion about the 1% on the 170, but now it makes sense as to why the money stayed in contingency.
What did we end up doing for the escrow for the Coliseum that was on the wish, the option list? The 150?
That's what we moved to 150 out of TDC reserves.
No, we added, um...
And I've got plus 30,000.
We changed it from 120 to 150.
We added, what, 25,000 to the, where did the wish list go? We added some money to the Coliseum. Because I asked Randy if it was enough for what we had budgeted this year to cover it, and he said, "No, I don't think we added..."
We added 120 for the gym floor.
But we didn't do that.
We added 25,000 from TDC reserves.
No, we didn't do the gym floor. We added 120 for the Convention Center escrow, plus 30. Got rid of the 150 up here, because it's no longer applicable. Then we added 25,000 from the 1% for X2.
Right.
So... That's, that's where I got off. The rubber, the gym floor was next. And the 120 was used for escrow for the Convention Center.
That's right.
Along with 30,000. So I'm going to take the 25,000 off, because that's X2. That has nothing to do with anything. That leaves 320,000 you're going to use in 1% money.
Why'd you take the 25,000 off?
Because it's for X2.
Okay, okay.
We're just dealing with Convention Center. X2's already in there, except for the... I'm just trying to get the Coliseum straight.
Well, that's not where I thought the 120 was coming from, but I'm fine with it if y'all are.
Well, even if you leave X2 in there, you got 345,000. Okay, 170 of that is going to come forward as a balance forward. And then you've got 268 right now in your reserves in next year's budget. So you'll still have some money left. I mean, not much, but...
What's the total in the reserves right now, all, altogether?
Oh, with the TDC reserves?
Yeah, TDC reserves. Not including this next year's budget.
Well, not including next year. You've got...
This is where I was having problems, I was like...
176,467 and 55,000 for X2.
That's budgeted expenses.
That's reserves behind TAB 18, the last line. So the 55 is still in there, and then you've got 268, 134 in reserves next year.
So there was, you had mentioned the $80,000 amount that was something different earlier, just a minute ago, when, when we first started this conversation?
55 is X2, and we added 25 to it, make it 80.
Okay, but the 55 is a budgeted item, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So what did y'all come up with on the 30,000?
We had taken it out of the, if I remember, we had taken it out. We were going to just add 30,000 of contingency. We changed that over, added, took the 120,000 from the floors and just took and added the $30,000 basically to that, reassigned it to, to the Convention Center, and then took all of it out of TDC, rather than having any of it come out of the contingency, or contingency.
That's the way I remember it.
That's the way I remember it. It's hard to guess stuff on that one seventy again.
Well, I'd, I'd rather go over and get it straight before I go back and change a bunch of stuff.
Right.
But are we, so nothing's changed. We're all square?
We're square. Um.
And we still have the same number on the contingent.
Yeah, I'll, uh, if we don't budget for it, if we do make a change, can we readjust later in the year if we need to? As far as adding anything to the TDC budget?
We just leave it in the reserve and we'll work on that later.
Mr. Chairman, one question. Couple of questions actually on the third cent TDC reserves. That two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one thirty-four that's requested for this year, is that in addition to the one seventy-six or is that including the rollover and then the difference is what's requested? Just want to clarify, that's all.
You're looking at the reserve on the expense side. That's what we're projected to have next year before all this started.
So the two sixty-eight is in addition.
Plus the one seventy. So that's what I mean. You're not going to have, that reserve number's going to go way down when you get your book back.
Okay. Second question is since we're on tab eighteen, looking at it, I did have a question. And since Greg is back, I think he'd be best to answer this question considering it's in the Coliseum. Under line forty-six hundred, repairs and maintenance. Could you just go over carefully the difference in the fifteen thousand from current budget to fifty-two thousand seven hundred for next year's budget?
Basically, we're flipping two line items from last year to this year.
Two line items?
If you look on your sheet, I'll have mine up here, but there's two line items on, there's one on maintenance and one on operation or operational supplies or something. Just flipping those two line items.
The fifty-two hundred line item.
Oh, I see. The fifty-two thousand seven hundred operating supplies. Okay. So the reality of it is just, it's at zero. Thank you.
All right. I didn't have but one more thing, then I'll turn it over to y'all. Mr. Harris, you just reminded me of it the day when you had to run to the office to make some copies. There's several times that we, we do that throughout the year. Do we need a budget for a printer up here or would it?
We, I already asked for that. Six months ago.
It just, there's been several times throughout the, throughout the years where.
We certainly could. I mean, it does happen from time to time. We're running back and forth to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Affirmatively installed.
You could do what?
We have a copier.
Here?
Yes.
Well, bless your heart.
You got to ask, I mean.
You've just got to get the golden key to find it.
How about that?
They're keeping that under lock and key and a secret, aren't they? Where's it at? In the safe. Well, here we are running around town trying to make copies and y'all got it right here. Appreciate that.
That's the. Nick, it's right through that door right over here into the safe. They've got it locked up. Good deal.
All right, well, that makes that a lot easier. All right, uh, anybody want to jump out with anything that they found over the weekend that they want to address?
I, I've got a small one that I want to address.
Yes, sir.
And then I've got some others here as well. If we could go back to tab two. That, I know I made a change here on one of these. I'm not sure about the other. And I want to give you some information on, up near the top of the, uh, that first page that, excuse me, maybe it's not the first page, third, third page behind tab two. Where we were talking about the chip seal. At the Coliseum and at Swanee Lake. We changed the chip seal at the Coliseum to sixty thousand. Is that what you have? Is that what everybody has?
Yes.
I'm trying to find it.
Okay. And did we leave the eighty-three in at Swanee Lake?
I think we took that out.
Nope, nothing. We took it out.
We was discussing possibly trying to get some mill and.
Okay, I've got a proposal to you. And let me first say that I apologize. I was a probably not like others last week terribly distracted with other things, but, uh, I went back and read through a lot of my notes. And discovered, you know, we had the, the conversation about the gas taxes and the restrictions, et cetera. So we had a higher number on some of these things because we were going to bid them out. Well, in my notes, I remember how I calculated this and it was, in fact, we have a general fund transfer in which will justify the expense that I need to make on those roads using our personnel rather than bidding them out. So what I have now, I went back and looked. I've got an actual expense on, with the company that we contract with for the surface treatment of thirty thousand dollars at the Coliseum and about twenty-two thousand at Swanee Lake. A total of fifty-two. So that sixty that we budgeted at the Coliseum will cover both of those projects.
But that's just the top treatment, correct?
That's correct. Balance of it, I can cover under the two million dollars that we're bringing in as a transfer in.
So we're able to do it on?
We're able to do it.
Okay.
If we were funded solely by gas taxes, we couldn't do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Based upon that information, could we not take that other sixty thousand dollars and use it as a, use it as potential for matching? If we're dealing with any kind of grants on the sidewalks? I know, uh, we did.
We didn't fund one and we did sixty for the other, so it's, it's not a.
All I'm doing is taking the one that we did fund and splitting it between the two.
Yeah, I realize that. What I'm saying is, is, is we, we had the hundred and twenty, we approved a hundred and twenty initially, sixty for each. And since you only need half of that.
I don't.
We did not.
I think you're the only one that had sixty for each. I think the rest of them didn't have anything in there for the other one.
The lake, I had nothing.
Nothing.
And for the Coliseum, we just did six.
Sixty.
Sixty, sixty for the Coliseum.
Okay, okay. My bad. I had sixty written down on both sides of my columns.
No, no, we didn't. We just, we cut the one twenty-six to sixty.
Correct.
And then cut the eighty-three out altogether.
Mr. Stapleton, I tried.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. We're going to find it.
Just on the radar, when we're looking at the Coliseum road going around the backside. If we can't at the same time address the entrance off of one thirty-six, that is awful tight for two vehicles. And if you got a cow trailer or something going in that way also is even tighter. I know that, I'm sure that I'm not a public works guy, but expanding the culvert and doing that, they probably could do that in the house, but just to put on the radar so that we can think about that at the same time maybe.
What we probably, I, I don't know that we can do it in this budget, but maybe in next year's budget, we could just repave that other portion that's out front and fix that at that time. All I've got in these numbers is to chip seal what doesn't have any improvement on it right now.
And I'm not sure what the, the timeframe is in reserves in one thirty-six. That could be done as the entrance way in then also. But just on the radar, it's, it's a tight.
Yes.
Going there.
That's true.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
With that being said, Mr. Harris, I know that the board had had a little bit of discussion about would we, if we have the money there, would we want to carry that road out to Goldkist? That's where it needs to go. I mean, honestly, we need to go through the back gate and run a.
I'm just saying if you're able to do it this way and, you know, and, uh, is it, is the board interested in trying to talk about that at the same time if we're able to do it?
Yeah, you think with that extra eight thousand that's in there, you can make it go that much further?
I don't see how they.
You give me ten, I'll try.
We get fifty-two when we was at sixty, so there's eight.
Make it, just, okay.
Just make it work.
You give me sixty and I'll see if I can make it happen.
Don't see, just make it work.
I'll, I'll, I'll do everything within my ability.
I, I mean, basically now we just need to know if the board's in support of doing the.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm saying about, uh, out at the lake. I mean.
Here's, if we can, if, if we can do it within the numbers, he's talking, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be for that. I'll, I'll be real close. That's Commissioner Fleming and I, you know, I just want to make sure he's.
That'd be thirty-eight at the Coliseum and twenty-two at the lake.
Yes, sir. I mean, I'm in support of that, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're good. Everybody fine with that?
Good with it.
You got that, Neil?
Twenty-two at Swanee Lake and thirty-two at the.
Oh, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight to add to the sixty.
No, 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 that is how we get to the sixty.
At the Coliseum.
Just scratch the sixty at the Coliseum and make it thirty-eight.
Do we need to reduce that by two and round it off for the Coliseum? I mean, could you do it for twenty?
Twenty and forty.
And forty?
I, I think we need to go thirty-eight and twenty-two right now.
Sounds like we got them pretty tight. That's where we need to keep them right.
It's, it's pretty tight, honestly. I mean, I've looked at the numbers and I think we're pretty tight on these numbers. The eight I'm not sure of, but I'm going to try to make it happen for eight. That's the drive going back out to Goldkist.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's, can we just do both of them in the same line item and say sixty-five for both projects? Not a piece, but total combined and then you move it around where you're at?
Absolutely.
Y'all fine with that?
So sixty-five.
The only thing, the, the only thing that I know we had a discussion about, and I realize that there are some funds that may be available in reserves that we don't have anymore because we just basically spent a bunch of it. But we had talked about the, the expansion of that road going out to, to Goldkist that could be covered under, was that TDC, uh, TDC money for that kind of a, uh? I'm just wondering if anything comes in. If it went out to, all the way out to Goldkist. But not just, we'd have to, remember we had said we'd have to name the road to go around back in order to get some sort, sort of funds.
Well, that, that was because of the gas tax.
That was, oh, gas tax. Okay, gas tax funds.
Yeah, but I've taken care of that.
Is Swanee Lake by the Coliseum? Why do you want to combine both of those? We'd never know what we did on which.
I was just, just so he can move the money where he want it. You don't have to combine them. I've just.
I don't think we need to go up.
They're not by each other.
If you give me sixty-five, I'll take care of both those projects.
That's what all I was getting at is letting him put it where it needs to go with each project and just.
I would really like to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm still confused as to why we're talking about adding another five thousand dollars to a project that we're already eight, about eight thousand dollars under on what you've gotten as far as your.
We're eight, we're, we're, we're not under if we.
If we add that section of road.
We're extending the.
So you're talking about spending the whole thing and getting the whole road put in?
Yeah, there's no sense.
We're going, we're going to do the loop around the Coliseum and back to the front. And then we're going to construct a new chip seal road out the back gate and back over to Goldkist.
And we cannot use gas tax funds for that?
No.
Even if we named it?
Well, you wouldn't have enough anyway. There, there just isn't enough there regardless.
Okay.
Only thing I ask you when we do move forward with that is when we build this road, if we can build it level, and I don't want a big hump out there in the middle of the fairgrounds if we can help it.
I was saying far as walking across it.
Yeah, yeah. Just when people are back and forth across that midway, it just needs to be a smooth transition.
Also too, if we're adding, if we're going to extend that out to Goldkist, I mean, if we have a nice wide radius entrance there, I mean, my, them trucks and trailers coming in and out. They come in that way rather than coming off the road. Have a check-in gate back there. I mean, it might alleviate some of that congestion up at the front all the time with just regular vehicles, I'm saying.
So I got, we added in sixty and took out sixty. Is that what y'all got?
No, we're in the discussion.
We just added in to sixty-five hundred or sixty-five thousand.
We, we had sixty when we're changing it to sixty-five.
Who's getting the five? Swanee Lake or the Coliseum?
Randy. Randy's getting the five. Randy gets the sixty-five. And I'm going to.
You're doing the projects in your fund?
Right. And what I'll do is it, I've got my notes. It is for the purpose of both the Coliseum and Swanee Lake.
So you don't have this in your million we're sending you?
No, no, no. Leave that alone. We're leaving the two million alone.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand total. And that's for the surface treatment of Swanee Lake and the Coliseum.
I guess I'll give it to the Coliseum, forty-three. Forty-three and twenty-two. I don't know.
That'll, that'll work. That'll work.
Correct.
Okay.
So basically what you were coming together and, and giving us a, a report to say we can do two jobs for the same amount of money. Now we're doing two jobs for five thousand dollars more, so.
But we expanded the job.
But, yeah, we, we did expand the job and we still didn't have to put the eighty-three back in.
Correct.
And moreover, I, I needed to go back. I had to look at my notes because I knew that I had figured out how to do this before. And we didn't have to bid this because of that transfer in. And that's saving us tremendously. One other thing I wanted to point out, Commissioners, we had a conversation about the excavator. We do have the larger excavator in the budget. It's actually year three of five. Again, I was distracted last week with other things, so I just wanted to bring that clarification to you. I went back and looked at my notes. The other, the excavator that we did put in the budget is for the roadside work, the larger one we do use in the mine. Uh, the water truck, we discussed that. And what I've done is we scrambled on, uh, Friday and talked to the lease company and we can make that truck work. I think we ended up putting fifty or sixty thousand dollars in for that truck. Was it fifty?
I believe it was fifty. I wrote fifty.
Yes, yeah. The fifty thousand dollars is what we put in. We cannot buy a truck for fifty thousand dollars, but we can lease the truck at fifty thousand dollars a year for five years with a one dollar buyout. And we will continue to keep the truck. That need isn't going to go away.
For fifty thousand dollars a year?
Fifty thousand dollars a year.
Five years? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for what?
You're financing the truck. You're financing the truck for five years. See, we had put, if you go back to the original number that we had in here, that was a used truck. The hundred and ten, I think is what it was.
Twenty seventeen.
And if you look at the backup in here, if I can put my hand on it.
Question, how would, how much would a new one cost?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Two plus one dollar.
I'll tell you, if I can find my sheet real quick.
We better off just adding fifty thousand to it and buying it.
That's a lot of money.
Hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is the new one.
But the price on, it was a hundred and ten for this one, right?
A hundred and ten was a two thousand seventeen. Now that was at the time that we ran these things. A few months ago, I'm not sure they even have that truck now. It was a used truck. But that's what we had tried to do at the time, was see what else was available. And they had a used one at that time. A new truck is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And that's the current year number. When we get into next year, I'm confident that number will be higher. But when we went ahead and talked to them about the lease with the dollar buyout at the end, it came to fifty thousand dollars. It's actually just under fifty thousand dollars a year.
Is there any way where you can increase the payment and buy it out earlier and save a little bit of interest or whatever they're charging?
Three years at seventy-three thousand.
Spend quarter million dollars on a truck.
Seventy-three, it's seventy-three thousand dollars a year.
That's two hundred and twenty-five.
I think it's a necessity, but I'd rather go back to the one-ten.
Yeah, I mean, if we were going to.
Well, I would too if they still have that truck, but I don't know if they do now.
Well, you should, you can find something.
I can try.
I mean, if we were going to, if you're going to take the, consider leasing it, I'd rather just go ahead and fund the additional sixty. Didn't you, I didn't write it down, but you said we budgeted fifty?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sir?
We budgeted fifty.
It was one-ten and we cut it down to fifty.
Right. But I'm just saying if, if everyone feels this a necessity before we do a fifty thousand dollar a year lease for five years, I'd rather add sixty thousand back into it.
What was the purpose? I know the purpose of a water truck, but I mean.
What, what was the purpose? I know the purpose of a water truck, but I mean, just to be used for the chip seal, so it won't be in, in circulation every day of the year.
Basically, they'll be using it pretty frequently when they're putting rock down and rolling for density.
Well, that and all these, when we have a drought in District Three, we're gonna run it up.
Is that what you're gonna do, keep those roads down?
Keep those roads, the dust down on them.
Well, we're about that much longer, won't we?
My biggest concern is, I mean, I know it's a hundred and ten thousand for a used one. But if, if that one was still available, but I'm always concerned about the maintenance, even though you said the mileage on this one is not that much, or what? What did you say about this one?
They didn't send me the mileage on here. I don't, I don't know what type of miles it has on it.
I, I just don't wanna spend the extra money in maintenance costs just because we're getting a used one for a, a, a good deal, a really good deal. If a lease is gonna be covered, the, the question is, is, is what is covered in that lease? Is all the maintenance costs similar?
It'll come with a standard warranty, the new, the new truck.
We can do a lot of maintenance for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Harris, I'm sure the answer's probably no, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. We don't have any trucks such as dump trucks that, uh, in our fleet that we could retrofit with a, send it to a, have a body put on it, nothing that's good?
No.
How, how much, and I'm just asking, like, I don't even know if we have a truck that would pull a fifth-wheel trailer. I mean, is, is buying a trailer cheaper than buying another truck, something we can pull that tank trailer with?
I can't answer that question, but I can tell you, from a safety standpoint...
Yeah, I mean...
I, I think we need to stick with a truck that's designed with baffles in it that's made for hauling water.
Well, it's just, when you're, when you're finishing, turn and twist and turn and try to turn around and go back the other way, putting out water, I mean, so.
Well, obviously, we're gonna have to find that money somewhere, so, um, I think if we can find the money, then whatever you guys wanna do, we'll do. No sense in going back and forth on here. We all have different ideas.
I just don't, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put a quarter million dollars into a water truck. Not right now.
I, I would agree with that. So I would agree with that in, in, like I said, in principle, that quarter million dollars will get a lot, a lot more done, but obviously, we, we, um, we have to have something, right? That's what you're saying, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, we absolutely need, we need, we need a water truck large enough to handle these chip seal roads that are tank on them. We've been easing into this business. I mean, we've, we've really been very conservative in jumping into this chip seal business and just adding little bits at a time, and this just happens to be one of those bits. The lease program would be, I mean, it isn't unlike what we do with graders and dump trucks and everything else, excavators, uh, with the exception that when we ran this lease, we made sure that included the one dollar buyout at the end, so it really, we're calling it a lease, but we're actually financing it.
Just a finance mechanism.
Is it larger than the one that you, that you, that we currently have, the one that not working properly?
Too small.
It's too small.
Too small. When we bought that, we were really more in the kind of irrigation, trying to keep sod alive on...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is it, it's larger than the one that you currently have?
Right, that's correct.
What's the one that we currently have, two thousand gallon?
I think it is. I'm going on memory, and I think it's a two thousand gallon truck.
Yeah, you said you got five thousand here, but I, I think we're gonna be at four thousand. For a ten-wheeler, is that what you had in mind, ten-wheeler truck?
No, it's a dual axle on the rear. It's five thousand gallon.
I understand the dual axle, that's where I get ten, ten wheels. Two axles on the back be eight, and then...
Oh, yes.
It's on the front.
Did you say ten wheels? I, I didn't even hear what you said.
I'm just saying a lot of them are four thousand gallon.
Yeah, this is a five thousand gallon truck.
And that was just because this one was the used one that we were looking at, and you're saying you don't know if it's still available?
The used one at a hundred and ten, I don't know if it's still available. That was a two thousand seventeen model that they had. This was, we prepared these, we started preparing the budgets a few months ago, so we checked at that time to see what they had in used equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I, if he thinks he can get one for, uh, that, I, the question is, is whether it's a four thousand, whether we, we end up finding a four thousand gallon instead of five thousand, or we find another five thousand, whether the money's gonna be there. If we don't fund it enough, he's gonna come back and ask for a little bit more, and, and if we can get a better deal, it'll roll over, so.
Well, you can fund it, uh, if we fund it at the one-ten, and he can't find one. The worst-case scenario is you have to do the lease, then you've got the money there to do it, but... I would rather fund it and let him try to find a used one before we go ahead and fund a lease.
My, uh, thoughts would be, I mean, obviously, we got a shortfall of funds, but I would like to just fund it at a hundred right now, and, uh, Mr. Harris, just make it work, like, just what's gonna have to happen. He's, he's good at that. He's gonna have to beat himself up a little more.
We can knock on doors, and we can take a hose and hook up to a hose bib if we have to.
Whatever it takes.
I've seen his negotiating skills. I think he can get it down.
So you think you can make it work at a hundred thousand?
I think he can give it good effort.
Closer making it work at a hundred than he is at fifty.
I can pledge to you that I'll do the work to try to make it happen.
Okay.
Whether or not the other, other parties wanna oblige us, I don't know, but I promise you I'll put the effort in to try to make it.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is, I mean, we're, we're trying to scratch here for every dollar, and, you know, I understand this is, this is a necessity for doing this roadwork, and I do acknowledge that, but, uh, it doesn't matter if it's, if it's the road department, or if it's fire rescue, or if it's the sheriff's department. I mean, we're all, we're all trying to give a little bit, so.
Mr. Chairman, I will go along with a hundred thousand.
So we'll add fifty to it. Everybody fine with that?
I'm good. That brings your contingency to about a four-eleven, I think.
I think we're good. Everybody's good with that?
Yep, yep, yep. All right, anything else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir, not right now. Not unless you find a bunch of money. I've got one more item, but I'm not gonna bring it up right now.
Next. Let's just, Mr. Richardson, you got anything you wanna add?
Well, I've got a lot.
Well, we'll let you start off with it, Boba.
Okay. I don't know if, I was hoping, um, someone else would bring this subject up, but I'm gonna bring the sheriff's budget up. And I've got some questions for you. If you can please step up to the mic and answer them.
I'm not sure if that microphone's working.
Yeah, I think you got it working. You wanna test it? Sheriff, is that mic working good?
Hello?
Oh, yeah, it's working fine. Um, I noticed that there is no mentioning of your smart cop payment, your final payment, and your smart cop in your budget, and I wanted to know where you've, where you place that, where you expect to pay for that payment?
The operating, uh, operating part of it.
Okay. I also, secondly, wanna know if you have an idea, general idea, on what you're turning back this year?
That's, you know, it's kinda a hard, hard thing to answer, you know, because of not knowing how all the bills come in and so forth, and get everything paid, but, you know, I'm looking, you know, probably running the same as, you know, what we've been doing, around the three, four hundred mark.
Okay, so, um, I'm wondering why we can't make that payment, since, especially since it's the last payment out of that, uh, turnback money, and therefore we're not increasing your budget up so that in future years, that smart cop will, you know, we're, we've got an extra two hundred and fifty, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment, right, roughly?
No, I, no, it's, oh, hang on just a minute, I, I got...
Your final payment?
I got it right, hang on a minute.
I was trying to go by my...
No, six, sixty-four, sixty-four, eight twenty-eight.
Six hundred and...
No, no, sixty-four, sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four thousand?
Right, and then, and then there's an annual fee, but the, but your last payment is sixty-four, eight twenty-eight.
Sixty-four, so it's not near as much as we thought it was.
Yeah.
Is that an annual fee?
No, no, that's the, that's the, uh, that's the last payment.
I thought the payments were like three equal payments of two-something.
Yeah, so did I.
I must've been wrong.
It was five hundred thousand dollars upfront.
I was thinking the first one was the highest, and then there was something after that.
He's got it not operating.
The first year, and then we have the go-live payment. Then the second year, you have your second payment, and your second year maintenance. Third year that we're in now, we paid the third payment, and by the end of this fiscal year, we'll be...
Was that what he gave you?
What were the totals?
Oh, okay.
I know our balance is a little over a hundred and seventy-two to pay for our third maintenance, our fourth payment, and the fourth maintenance. We still have a hundred and seventy-two left.
Well, why is he, why is he saying it's sixty-four, the final payment?
No, that, no, that's, yes, year four.
Year four. That's including the...
And then, and then you gotta add the, uh, the maintenance.
So is the maintenance there every single year going forward? How much is the maintenance?
Uh, fifty-five, fifty-five oh forty-seven.
Okay, so fifty-five thousand dollars is your maintenance fee, and you said you had a hundred and seventy-two thousand left. What was that all about?
That's your third year maintenance fee that we're in right now.
That you haven't paid yet?
Correct. And then next year, we have the final payment for the software, which is the fourth year payment of the sixty-four. And then next year, we'll also cover the maintenance of the sixty-four.
Okay, so when do you anticipate paying the maintenance this year? Before the end of fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, reality of that's in this fiscal year, not in, uh, not a next fiscal year, so we're talking about a hundred and, you said sixty-four thousand, and then maintenance was?
No, sixty-four, sixty-four.
Sixty-four for the final payment?
Right.
And then?
And then, and then, uh, fifty-four.
Fifty-four, so about a hundred and, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars altogether, um, roughly. All right, so, um, I, I know for sure I don't wanna see the sixty-four in there, in your budget. I wanna see that taken out of, of any turnback funds. Uh, I just feel like that, that's a, it's a temporary payment, you've, you're turning back more than your, your, uh, your, enough to cover it. Maintenance, on the other hand, I don't have a problem with the maintenance being in there, uh, but I definitely don't wanna see that. I thought that it was a lot bigger of a number, and I was hoping that it was a lot bigger of a number, but, um...
Weren't the payments higher the first year? They...
Yeah, yeah, they was, you know.
I thought so.
Yeah, and then, then they dropped down after that, yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought.
That's the, that's the first thing. The other thing is over the last seven years, you've averaged, the, the department has averaged, no, not all of you, but the department has averaged three hundred and forty thousand dollars and change in money turned back, uh, to fine and forfeiture. In the last two budgets, which should be your budgets, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's three forty-six oh five one, and I think one of those was affected by the smart cop initial payment.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I think that we can cut. I think we can, we can shrink your budget and stay within all the things that you need to fund, including your raises. I don't mind having less turnback money, but I don't, I'm not so sure that it's wise for us to have two contingencies. And, um, uh, that's what we have a board contingency for, so if anything came up, we, we need to keep some in there. We need to keep a lot more than we have, but we're gonna have this year, that's for sure. So, um, I'm just telling you that, I, I mentioned to you when you first, um, when you first gave me your budget, that ten million dollars is gonna be the big hangup, and, uh, that came in back to us again the same way it came to us before, uh, with no trimming. I think you can do some trimming personally, uh, without having to worry about cutting costs, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand. Um, and like I say, you know, and I had got a call, uh, you know, about this conversation that we're having now on the weekend, which, you know, today's Monday, so there's not a whole lot we can do, but, you know, I got, uh, which I informed Michelle about it, so, although I can tell you, Commissioners, that, you know, yes, I'll, I'll glad to take a look at it, um, and, you know, see what, see what we can do to tighten things up. But to kinda, you know, give you some, some of my plight, I mean, I understand that, you know, everybody needs to save money. I understand that, I know that completely, you know, and, and I'm gonna do my part, what I can. Uh, and I was, didn't bring, I was gonna bring it up, uh, Thursday, I guess it was Thursday when we had the meeting, you know, but, you know, I've got three, three guys that's, that's left me and got a couple talking about it, going to the highway patrol. And the reason I go into highway patrol, because, you know, I, I start at thirty-two, they start at forty-two. Uh, my health insurance is twelve, fourteen hundred dollars a month, and theirs is two hundred dollars a month. So, I mean, there's nothing I can do about the insurance, but, you know, uh, you know, and to pay, obviously, there ain't a whole lot I can do about it, but, you know, that's just some of the things that I'm, that I'm facing, and, and, and I'm getting some good offers leaving me. And, and, uh, as you see, the world, you know, is, for whatever reason, is changing, and it's hard for me to get qualified applicants, you know, to replace these guys from, so, and I'm, I'm not willing to just put anybody out there on the, on the job, you know, to represent me. I want some, some good qualified help. And the only way to do that is, is to, is to, you know, pay them, you know, what they're worth, which, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can. Another thing is that, you know, our maintenance, uh, cost, we always have to do it at the county road department, and they went up from twenty-four fifty to fifty dollars an hour. So that, that's doubled my, uh, my, my price there, uh, on maintenance on, of my vehicles. So, um, you know, there's just, you know, there's just some things here that I'm, that I'm, that I'm facing here, you know, going forward that, you know, we're just, but, but to answer your question, we'll be glad to, to look at it and see where we can tighten our, our, our belts up for it.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I'm not questioning the cost increases in any way, shape, or form, and that. I, I just believe that based upon what we're seeing on turnbacks, on return money back to, um, after your budget year, that there's enough of a, there's enough of a bubble in there that we can work to get to a comfortable number for everyone.
And, and you're right, and, you know, another thing that, you know, as, as everybody knows, the, the population of Swan County increases along with my jail population, you know, and, uh, you know, that's, you know, anywhere from a hundred and seventy to two hundred, you know, hundred folks in there, you know. And, uh, and I think I told you one time is that we had a, we had one that had to take a helicopter ride, for whatever reason, that wasn't happy with it, but, you know, we got, we, we got stuck with a seventy thousand dollar, uh, helicopter bill. Now, John Mills with his, you know, his negotiation fees got it down to, you know, about ten thousand, you know, so it only takes, you know, a couple inmates to get hurt, and, and, you know, and, and, and that kind of, that kind of kills our three and four thousand, or that we turn back in. Hope that never happens, but, you know, without my crystal ball, I, I have no idea, you know, what's gonna happen from day to day.
What I'm saying is that's where our board contingency can help out, and I think that that's something that you can come back to when we have those situations arise, especially the, the, the jail and, and the operations jail. You don't have, I know you don't, you don't always keep a full, uh, slate of prisoners. You don't always have a full staff. I understand that. We can always have a hurricane come through, uh, major storms, major problems that require additional funding, but that's why we have a contingency so that we can cover those things, and, and I, I still believe that we can do this and get in a, a number that's happy, that we're all happy with. Uh, because I'm not happy with the number you gave us personally, at all, so.
Well, you know, another thing is that, one thing I don't have control over, too, is the, uh, is your, uh, is our retirement, you know. Uh, even though we, we, we are gonna have a, we did have a decrease in the, uh, our insurance, you know, my retirement goes up every year. And I have, you know, I have no, you know, control over that, so, I mean, it's, you know, stuff is gonna go up, and, you know, and I hate to, hate not to give the, you know, my people a raise, um...
You're not, I don't expect you not. Again, I don't believe that this is, involves cutting any of the, of the budget that you have this year, other than what's gonna come back in at the end of the year. So, uh, we're just taking, simply taking some of the contingencies that you're allowing for and moving them over to the board contingencies. And, and what's beneficial with that is, is if those contingencies don't come to pass, then we're able to utilize those for other things. And the biggest thing is, is that if we stick it in fine and forfeiture, that's a problem for us. I mean, when it comes to, it just keeps on growing and growing and growing, these, this five hundred thousand dollars a year, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, three hundred thousand dollar year turnback, it's like, it's like having money taken out of your ta, out of your income for taxes and then getting a big fat refund at the end of the year, when the reality of the matter is, is, uh, what they say, the old saying is, is a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush. Having the money to spend in place right here, right now, is better than having a refund later on down the road. And so I, I'm looking at that. I just don't wanna see two contingencies sitting out there when we have one already there set up for these types of things, especially on a year that's tight as it is this year.
Okay, uh, and, and, and I understand, but please understand my plight, too, you know, that, you know, I'm looking at, you know, losing guys because they want better-paying jobs, and I, you know, and I, I can't blame them for that, but, uh... you know, and I, I can't blame them for that, but, uh...
So, based upon what you said with that, and I apologize for interrupting there, I want to make sure I got this in. Are you suggesting that, that when you hire someone, that you have the ability to raise their, uh, to offer them more than what that position, um, entails when you hire them back in? And I don't, I don't, I'm just asking for clarification and understanding, that's all. Let's say you, let's say, for instance, you just turned over your assistant, uh, your, your chief deputy, okay, and, uh, last one went out, next one is gonna, he's, and I don't know what Buddy's doing in any way, shape, or form, so I don't mean this any way, shape, or form to come across, uh, but last one goes out at, I don't know, just throw out an arbitrary number, seventy-five thousand dollars a year, the other one says, I want eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Do you have the freedom within your budget to do that, uh, just by approval?
Well, I mean...
Or do you have to come back for board approval for changing your, your...
No, no, what, no, once, you know, once you, you know, given my budget, then, you know, it's up to me to make, you know, the, the salary adjustments and all, but, uh...
Okay.
Uh, but here again is, you know, is that, you know, by losing them, you know, we naturally will, you know, hire someone on, you know, but, you know, and then, and I give credit sometime for credit for the, uh, years of the service, you know, and, you know, just for, you know, and just enticing some good, you know, good, uh, help that's, that's got some, uh, you know, history behind them and, you know, and, and has knowledge of the job.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mine'll be a lot more brief, Sheriff, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I've sat here for the last, well, nine years, and I see on average about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars come back every year from the Sheriff's Department, and we had the same conversations with the previous sheriff about the unexpected, you know, unanticipated expenses. But the documented history shows three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on average is gonna come back, so my question would be, can you reduce your budget by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and survive? Because history tells us that you can. Now, if you've got a crystal ball that says that you can't, then I'd like some detail on that, but my curiosity is simply based on what has happened every single year. Every single year that happens.
Right, that, I mean, that's...
Which tells us that we're over budgeting the Sheriff's Department, only to have it come back later. And I think that's what the Commissioner's point was.
Yeah, we know the fixed expenses are there, if I can speak, Mr. Chairman. I hear what Commissioner Richardson's saying, and I agree with what Randy says. I think what we're asking is, or what he was asking, and I tend to agree with, is there a way to cut that overall budget?
I mean, I mean, I mean, it's, until, you know, and I'm sure there is, you know, I mean, to answer your question, yes. You know, how much, you know, I asked where I'm, I asked where I'd have to, you know, put pen to paper and look, go line by line, you know, and, and I'm sure we can, you know. Uh, I'm not sure if we talk about, you know, that much, you know, but until I, until I start getting, looking at it, you know. I know, I know we can do, we can some, you know, um, but then, you know, it's just, you know, it just takes, you know, one instant, you know, to, to put us in the red and so forth, so, and then, and then you're gonna look at me and say, well, Sheriff, you know, why didn't you manage your money better, you know? So, I, you know, so you're, you're asking me to, to do some stuff that's, first of all, I really can't answer that question, and then, you know, I'm, I'm gonna look like up the bad guy when I say, hey, Commissioners, you know, I overspent my money, uh, you know, I need some more because of I had an inmate get sick, you know, so, I mean, and that's...
That would be a justified, I wouldn't look at you for that.
Yeah.
That would be a justified expense, if we're at your hands, we understand that.
So, I mean, so that, that money's in there, you know, is, you know, is, as like I say, is, is we, you know, we're frugal with our money, you know, we try to, you know, spend, you know, to, you know, make sure that the, uh, we get every dollar of our tax, our tax money. Um, and, and here again, you know, we, we can cut some, I, I know we can, you know, just, if you just give me some time to put pen to paper, uh, then I can tell you a amount.
Sheriff, I, I, I'm gonna make a suggestion to you, I, and it's, I'm just gonna renew my suggestion that I gave to you back when you gave me their budget proposal, and that is that if you'd come in under ten million dollars, if it was nine million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent, we may not be having this conversation. Uh, ten million seems to be a big number here for us.
Yes, sir.
And, um, uh, I think you can cut, I, I'll be honest with you, I think you can cut two hundred thousand dollars out of this budget. I mean, you're only talking thirty, a hundred and thirty-four thou- a hundred and thirty-five thousand or so...
Okay.
More than the SmartCop program, and, uh, I, I'd like to see the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars go, but, um, but, uh, like I said, that's, that's where we need to work on a, a number that's happy, that we can all become, uh, happy with, that knowing that the services will not be cut, that your people are being taken care of, but also that we're doing the best for our citizens.
I understand.
Okay.
And, and, and like I say, we'll, you know, um, like I said, that's why I brought Michelle over here to, so she'll know what, you know, what we have to do, and, and like I say, we'll, we'll definitely start working on it, guys, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll just, like I say, can't tell you the number, but let, let me, give me time to work on it, and I know we can, we can probably help, uh, accommodate things for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think I can agree with that. If, you know, you go in, y'all put your pens and paper together and see what you come up with.
Yes, sir.
Work with that.
And I, I just want to add, I don't, I don't think anyone's suggesting that you've, uh, mishandled or misspent any of the money, that's evident by the fact that we, you, you have such a large amount that you turn back every year, that's frugal with it, and, and we all recognize that. Um, it's just a tough year, and we...
Yes, sir.
Looking to, looking to sharpen it wherever we can.
And, 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 I don't, if I just remind you too, uh, Ms. Richardson, um, you know, I, I mentioned this Thursday, you know, uh, talking about the SmartCop, you know, and I'm glad that I done it when we did, because if I tried to put it on now, I, I can know what answer I'd get now, but, you know, uh, in twenty-twenty-one, you know, uh, with the system, the, the report writing system that we had before SmartCop would not be compatible with this NIBR system that we've got to have...
Yeah.
Or UCR report. And the SmartCop system is now, so what I'm saying is, I would've had to change whether SmartCop or something, I would've had to change later on, so, so, you know, so we're, we're ahead of the curve by getting SmartCop and, and we're, and we're about to get it paid for, other than the, the, uh, the service charge on it. So, I mean, I'm, and I, and I thank y'all for, you know, seeing that too, and helping me without that, because, you know, if I asked you right now for it, I, I know what my answer would be, and I don't know what I would do to try to solve the problem of not being compliant, I, you know, we'd be in a, in a bind again.
Well, um, I was a proponent of your SmartCop system...
Yeah.
Uh, before I became a county commissioner, uh, so I understand...
So, some of, so some of this, a lot of this stuff that, that, that I have to do, you know, is, is, is mandated to, for us to do it, you know? If we don't do it, then, you know, just, that's why I went to the SmartCop, because of, of being in noncompliance. If the LSA was in noncompliant, you know, would they ever shut us down with our David, with our FCI, NCIC? You know, I don't know, but that, but they can do that, you know? So, a lot, some of this stuff, guys, is just that, you know, it, you know, it's pushed on me, and then I push it on you, so, uh, anyway, uh, we're, we're trying, guys.
So, there's another twenty-one thousand, uh, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars in two percent savings...
Yes, sir, exactly, yes, sir.
So, there's some additional funds.
So, we, yeah, so we can, yeah, we're, we're gonna start, we're gonna start whittling away, and, and, uh, and I think we'll come to a number where everybody can agree, hopefully.
I've got one more question. It is not a question, it's just a comment. Your, on the updates on the SmartCop, do, uh, have you had to have any done lately? But there's some updates on it.
That, you know, that, and it don't cost us anything to do it, you know, yeah, well, there's, others updates all the time, you know, that they, but they push out, but now that, that these updates don't cost anything, uh, uh, Ms. Clyde?
That's written into your maintenance, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's on the maintenance. But there's some updates on the state side that just happened, occurred over the weekend. Um, there was some updates on it.
Right, yes, sir. And, and like I say, I, you know, I see updates all the time, 'cause they always send us emails to, you know, to, uh, restart our, our computers to, so our update would go through, so I know we get them all the time.
Okay. I do appreciate everything that you do. I mean, you're serving our community well, as far as I'm concerned, and, uh, and I was gonna ask you if you had statistics on, um, on how many, uh, traffic stops that you had since you've changed some of the things that, uh, over the last three years, but on the way to, on the way here, I passed, uh, your traffic guy out there, someone pulled over, so I, I thought, well, maybe it's moved at this point.
No, I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have numbers, but I can tell you, it's a lot more than, than we had been, yes, sir.
So, thank you for what you do, and like I said, and, and like they said, I, I echo everything they said. This is not about the way you're spending your money or anything like that, I think this is just simply, I think you're doing a good job, and I think you're getting the services that we need to get, but, uh, we're just trying to figure out where we can cut here and cut there.
I understand. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions in regards to this? Was that all you had, Ms. Richardson?
Uh, no, but, uh, I'll be glad to chime in on any other...
Well, just keep going.
Okay. Uh, most everything else that I have is just small cuts here and there, I think that we can, um, where'd Greg go?
He knew what was coming, he left.
Yeah, okay, so, um, uh, I think that we can cut here, cut there, and save a little bit here, it's not, not major cuts. Uh, I would, I do have questions, um, about what anticipated, um, repairs at the courthouse that we're looking at, that's, that's causing double of, uh, of the cost, um, uh, so that we're budgeting for, um, under the Board of County Commissioners, as well as, um, as some questions about the equipment capital outlay, can some of this stuff be funded? Uh, are we, you know, like, uh, the capital outlay, I know that that, that entails, um...
Is it gonna come back?
Uh, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, does that entail some of the costs that we have to incur before grants are paid in?
I don't have yes or no.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you know?
I don't.
Okay, so, now I've got Randy's attention. Um, the, um, what anticipated cost, uh, for the courthouse are causing that budget to double?
Which tab are you on?
Uh, that would be under, I didn't write all this stuff down, should be under two, uh, under tab, you know, Board of County Commissioners. Um, I think five. That's general revenue, hang on. I didn't mark down the, but it was under B O C C. What is that? Uh, courthouse. Tab five, yeah.
Where are you? Which, which line?
Hang on, I'll get it, let me get to the blue tab here, where I can, six hundred and one. There's no blue tab in here.
Not the bulletproof glass.
No, I, I don't, I don't know, that's, that was, that was separated by itself, uh, was it not?
That's, yeah, that's the only one that I can...
Are you in this current year on the green bar?
I'm sorry? No.
Are you in the current, you're on the green bar looking?
I'm in the book.
About courthouse repairs, where it went from ten thousand to twenty thousand?
Yes, that was one of them. So, yeah, the bulletproof gra- glass was separately lined item, this is on page, um...
It's on page two, that twenty thousand.
Two, three, yeah, two, it's got the twenty thousand on the courthouse repairs. Are we looking at some...
Forty-six hundred dash oh one.
Dash, yes.
With a projected this year of only thirty-five hundred. So, Mark, I mean, would you handle, do you handle the repairs on...
Okay, let, let me just, here, here's where we are, we, we do have bulletproof glass, but we also have some other things that are on a list, there was an audit done at the courthouse, um, for security.
Okay.
And I went around with, uh, uh, oh, gosh, I can't remember. I, I went to so many locations over there that we've got to do a number of things beyond the bulletproof glass, we've got to put bars and windows around the basement, uh, we've got to fix some other glass upstairs and do a number of things beyond the bulletproof glass. Bulletproof glass is something that we had done in the current year, um, in other areas, but now we need to do it and change out some doors to bulletproof doors, there's just a number of things that are associated with these improvements that have to occur.
Are these complacency issues, or are they just...
Yes, they are.
Okay.
You've got sheriff's windows, doors, et cetera, on the backup.
That's, that's part of it.
Okay. Is there any way we can cut, I mean, are we, any way we can cut a, even fi- I'm, I'm one of these guys that I'm looking at nickel and dime on some of this stuff, not taking it completely out of the budget, but if we can trim some of it? I mean, we had enough five thousand dollars.
Lamar Kent, Lamar Kent, that's who I ran around the whole place looking at stuff. I wouldn't recommend doing it on that line right now.
Okay.
We've got a number of things that are gonna need to be done, and that was a best guess at what it's gonna cost to accomplish those things.
Okay. Um, second is on page three, line item sixty-two hundred dash thirteen, that's that one that had admin, uh, Public Works, ADA, R, uh, Rail, I guess that's Railroad, I don't know what RR would be, uh, Road, Road and Roads, I don't know, but, uh, office space, that's general for your office spaces. Uh, we're projected not to spend any money, are you escrowing money for something?
No, what, well, no, what we did was we took the money out of the current year budget in order to do, and you've got notes in here.
I didn't understand, that's the reason why I'm asking the questions.
Let me see if I can find my notes real quick.
Is this note here for the sheriff's windows to bulletproof them, or...
Yes.
Cause he's got a question on that.
Is it, is it gonna be done this time?
We've, we've got bullet, yeah, Lamar took me around, we, we looked at the, like, the teller windows there and doing that, and then bulletproof doors and some other things in that one corridor, and then there are other areas around that courthouse that were in, he had a list of items...
Okay, so...
From that audit that needed to be done.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I like, 'cause, you know, they, they, they don't know nothing there at Sheriff's Office, so that'd be, would really much like to have that done, you know, just in case, you know?
Yeah, this is at the courthouse.
It's in next year, on their budget, so they're gonna...
So, this is the Douglas demolition, that two twenty-five?
Yeah, we took the money out of the current year budget...
Yeah, I remember that.
And we moved it over there to take care of that and said, okay, we'll put it back in next year.
So, okay, so that's just simply just, uh...
That's just putting it back in, so that we can do the project.
Where are we at?
Uh, do you need that much? Can we, uh, fund it a little bit less?
No, I, I think we need that much. I'm hoping that it, that we can do it within that.
That was the only question that I had. Uh, the other ones were really concerning, not understanding a couple of things, but I, I can pull you off, um, offline and talk about that, so, um, all right, next, I'll make it brief, uh, just go through these, I'm on number three and I got fifteen, so, um...
Hey, while we're right there, real quick, um, online, seventy-one hundred, is that one point eight-five million dollar?
What tab are you on?
Tab five.
All right.
It's that loan, I think we're on payment seven of ten.
Next year will be seven of ten.
What, what's the remainder that we owe on that? What's the remainder that we owe on that?
That's the one we got, 1.8 and 2.6 at the same time.
The balance, unpaid balance, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, for both of those, actually.
For 1.8 we owe before next year 886,000 684. And the 2.6 we owe 1,300,629 before next year.
300 what? 1,300,629.
1,300,629.
Are there any balloons on those? Are they just going to finalize?
No, it's just paying down. That's from the amortization schedule.
We got the two because one was the...we got two because of some...
Almost a lawsuit. I think that was the settlement, wasn't it, for the airport?
Right, yeah. One of the outstanding debts that we have was associated with the lawsuit at the...associated with the airport, the gate coming in from the development behind it.
So 2 point...almost 2.2 million we owe.
How much?
2.2 we owe on those two loans. Okay, and then the other loan, the $2 million construction loan, we're in five of 15 years, and right now we owe 1.5. And all this is according to the amortization schedule, so I don't have the exact...I mean, it's going to probably deviate a little bit, but not that much.
No, I was just...I was just wanting to see what we owed compared to what we had in our reserve capital outlay. That was all I was asking for. I was trying to see if we wanted to get out of it without eating up that outlay. I don't know if I want to do all that.
I wish we didn't have any of them.
Me too. All right, Mr. Richardson.
That's...like I said, I don't have...oh, okay. Are we done with Randy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. You can probably answer all these questions as far as most of these, I guess. Outside professional services under...you're going to have to ask me tab, Senator Legal, which would be tab eight. Unlike the way we order our speakers.
I lied to you. I had one more question. Did we...we never did the padding in the courthouse, did we?
I was going to say, I'm looking for that. I want...
No, and we didn't budget it.
And we didn't budget it this year because I seen the 25. So that went ahead and rolled over into the contingency?
We didn't...well, we didn't roll it because we're not...
That's what I'm making sure. We didn't roll it, okay.
That's what I was looking for. How much was that?
25,000.
That's what I thought, yeah.
It just started at five.
Outside professional services. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so under tab eight...
I just didn't see it roll forward. I was pretty sure we weren't going to do anything with that.
Line 8,100 dash...
We're going to start renting boat cushions out, is what we're going to do.
Get it out there in a minute. All right, under legal services, tab eight, line 3,100 dash 8,1, outside professional services. We're not spending anything on projected this year. Why are we going...why are we doubling that?
So we didn't spend anything short...
We didn't...or projecting not to spend anything in this current year, but we're doubling to next year. Are we seeing something that's coming up that we don't know about? What tab are you on there? Eight.
I would have put money in there for the ADA... The ADA issues that we're dealing with.
Okay, but would we be paying that 15, like the settlement that we agreed to a couple of meetings ago? Would that...is that where that would be coming out of?
Part of it. For the professional service piece of it, yes.
Because I see the legal fees, professional service legal fees, and then professional services. I don't see anything else under that. I just want to make sure that we have some sort of an understanding as to why we're doubling it and we're not spending on spending anything.
Well, that's...
90 percent, more than 90 percent would come from that level. As part of the damage resolution.
Well, that still leaves me...that still leaves us with $35,000. That's...are we expecting a whole bunch more on this for all the work that we're doing?
Well, there's no way to know.
I know.
Again, we don't have the crystal ball on this, and we just know what we've been through thus far. It wouldn't cause many heartburn if you zero it out, as long as you understand you're going to have to pay it from contingency later. But realistically, there's a real good chance that we're going to have more expense associated with this issue.
And I definitely agree with...I definitely agree with your sentiments, but I'm asking the sheriff to do basically the same thing. And that is, is allow us to...allow us to be able to handle any larger expenses if we have a contingency. And I think that we'd be...would at least be better off asking for it to come out of there and not have to worry about it. That's...it's 25 additional thousand dollars, and again, most of these things are just trimming. Let's see what we can do to trim here, trim there, but it's still there. And when I...and by the way, a red flag is when you're doing your budgets, if you've got a projected zero spending, why are...you're going to have to explain to me more detail why you're asking to go up.
Well, we really don't have a zero expense. You've got to remember, when we prepared these budgets...
Yes, I agree, back in March.
We were months earlier. We've handled that one issue since then, so this isn't reflecting what we did have to handle.
Okay. But that's the legal expenses, though. If we could...if we could cut that down a little bit, I'd be happy. If we could save here, save there, then. I'm looking for $100,000 to come out somewhere else, to be honest with you. And that's what I'm shooting for. I think we can do it. Maintenance. Maintenance.
Before you jump...
Are you making a change? You recommended... I'm recommending that we reduce it. The question is, is how much?
Well, I need to do more.
But no one said anything, so... I would recommend taking it...leaving it the same at 25,000 and not increasing it at all, knowing 15,000 is coming out of it.
You're talking about the outside professional services?
Outside professional services.
Can y'all live with that?
Listen, if we exhaust it, then I'll come back and...
That's all the...only option. You take it out. If they need it, they come back to us.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
It's just you wind up with the budget at the end of the year, but...
That's my recommendation. Is that okay?
Okay.
I heard two.
What is the...and you're leaving the settlement releases at the bottom?
He's on outside.
$20,000 settlement.
You've actually got a couple of issues here. One is the settlement. The other is professional services that you're paying outside attorneys to handle. Settlement's the piece that's going to the plaintiff. You've got lawyers on the other side that we have to pay the expenses for.
That's what I'm confused about, because I know when you get a settlement on a normal court case, the settlement includes those attorney's fees. And so if we settled for 15,000, if that's the number that we settled on, I would have thought that that would include the attorney's fees on the other side for doing it. Mr. Pravat, could you speak to that?
Yes, sir. If you took the number, the 25, we still have other counsel that we have out there for the utilities. You know, some...there's other things other than just the ADA. We made the increase because it was going to be dealing with the ADA. And what we were trying to do is, so that you would keep it clear in your minds, or maybe it was clear in my minds, and it's not so clear in your mind. But, you know, when we're paying these settlements, the part that actually... And only a part goes to the, you know, the plaintiff, which would be the release part down here. And then the attorney's fees portion of the same settlement, we were reflecting it up in the top, up there as outside counsel.
Okay, so would...again, would the 15...
You can drop...you could drop the 50, take 25 percent, 25,000 of it, and just add it to the settlement and releases down there at the bottom and, you know, make it 45,000 down there. And that way you'd just have it all in one lump sum in your mind if you want to do it in that fashion.
I just want to save $25,000. That's what I'm looking at doing.
Well, if you took the $25,000 off, that's fine. We still have to come back for the settlements, you know, to...for you to be approved. I mean, anyway, so, you know, hopefully...
So the number you gave us a few meetings, a couple of meetings ago?
Yeah.
That number was not a final approval? It was just information?
No, the number that we had was 15,000. We haven't completed the paperwork, you know, on all of that yet from them.
Okay.
But that included the 15,000 was the total, including damages and attorney's fees.
Okay.
Okay.
I just don't see the...
So we split...we split it for budget purposes.
But if you...if we did make the $25,000 cut, could it be reversed back if needed?
That would be up to y'all, as you...
Yeah, we could refund it back out of contingency if we needed to.
Yeah, it'd be just go back into contingency.
But if we don't, then it sits there for the next time. And again, what I don't want to see, and I don't think it would happen, because I don't think our budget director would do that to us, but I don't...what I don't want to see is something come again next year, and we have another increase, $75,000, and without anything spent out of it, or very little spent out of it, I just want to be able to see and explain to my constituents why we're doubling our budget on something that we're not spending any money out of.
We're not trying to...we would have never put an increase in here were it not for this ADA issue that every county and every city is involved in. If they're not involved today, they're going to be. Every single one of them are going to have lawsuits against them. So that was the only reason that we increased this, recognizing what's going on, what the trend is, and where everyone's headed with these lawsuits. We're just trying to provide for it if it comes up. If you want to take it out, take it out. If it comes up, we're going to pay it out of contingency.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem supporting Mr. Richardson. Take it out, and like you said, we're going to pay it one way or the other, so it...
Yeah.
We're, you know, if y'all are in favor of that, let's take it out and move on. We're on item three of 15. We're going to be about four more days here, it looks like.
Right.
That's three, I think.
All right, take it out.
So just explain to Ms. Nina how exactly you want to handle that.
So line 3,100 dash 81 is going to be 25,000 instead of 50.
Can we move on?
Yep, keep going.
Next, maintenance.
Which one?
Could you give us the tab number?
What's the tab? It's 10. Forgive me, I haven't put the tabs on my notes, so I have to go back and look. Tab 10, and just seeing if there's a...again, if we can do something with it. You've got a...under operating supplies, you had mentioned some flooring, and I know you spent more this year than you'd currently budgeted, or you're projecting to spend more than you currently budgeted. Do we have...
Under operating supplies?
Under...yeah, under operating supplies, 5,200, line 5,200.
Okay.
Second page. What are we anticipating additional...is this...I guess what I'm trying to figure out is... I had written down flooring because under operating supplies, you said increased workload. Wait a second.
Yeah, that's not flooring.
I don't know where I go.
That's not...
Oh, well, flooring was a separate issue, sorry.
Okay, all right.
And mandated upgrade, that's what I was looking at. I wanted to...and this is not something I'm trying to cut. I'm trying to understand what the mandated upgrade is that you had written down there.
Well, let me go back and see if I can find my notes on mandated.
You may have answered this Thursday. I just...
Because I only had a couple of increases. Let's see.
Where's mandated upgrades?
It was in his notes.
You in the notes?
Under 20...his 2020 budget notes.
Yeah, on that page there.
Yeah, it says mandated down there, but I don't...it was probably just to be reflected as increased workload. I don't know that the mandated upgrade had anything to do...we are coming into compliance with some ADA issues in a couple of places, and that would...that's minimal, but my increase was minimal. I mean...
Okay.
Actually, we have just inherited more buildings. We have more work. We've got staff, and unfortunately, most of our buildings are old.
Okay, and the other question that I had was flooring was because you got 25,000 on the budget request, but 20,000 on the budget worksheet, so... I won't argue with that one. You can leave it just as it is. Because you're not asking for anything else. It's just rolling over. It's not even rolling over. It's just...
Oh, we spent 25 last year. Okay, actually, we did not spend 25 last year. Last year, we spent about...well, you have to understand how it was laid out. We had over $80,000 in flooring last year. What we did was, is we did a lot of it at the library. So what we allowed that to do is we shifted that money under the library's budget so they could use it as match. Okay, well, previously to this, we never had a flooring budget, and that just didn't seem prudent to me. So I gave you a flooring budget this year of $25,000 so that I can systematically work through our building and address our issues, just because we have constant wear. And if we wait until we have $200,000 worth of floor, and I don't think y'all want to hear me come to you and ask you for $200,000 worth of floor.
No, I agree.
So I just wanted to be proactive in dealing with these flooring issues.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think Commissioner Richardson asked this, but it does say under operating supplies, current 124...
Yes.
Projected 180, requesting 160.
Yes, that is correct. I'm just asking for the difference in the 160. I know I will spend more this year, but we have had some unusual expenses this past year.
So you'll spend more than you budgeted for last year, but you're less than what you're going to check?
We actually have two additional employees this last year that you allowed us to put on. And when you put people on, you've got to give them something to do.
Yeah.
I got to provide...I got to provide work for them.
That increase is offset with his decrease in his machinery and equipment.
Well, that machinery and equipment was one vehicle that y'all allowed me to get this last year, and I won't be getting it next year.
No, one of those new guys will be riding a bicycle.
I was trying to help you.
Well, I mean, I don't mind being transparent.
I know.
I don't mind being transparent.
But the increase in the insurance, that...you did the correct rate. That's just the new employees.
Thank you, Nina.
What did I do?
You did my payroll.
What did I do with this payroll?
I was in the...
You did the right insurance.
The right insurance rate. I just said the increase was the two new employees.
Which one's still vacant? Still in the vacant?
Yes, I did. Well, they're there to be filled. They're on hold right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not recommending any changes. I just...
No, I'm not either. Building maintenance, I mean, that's...that's one of our biggest costs, long-term.
It is.
And anything we can do little by little, it keeps that big, big number from hitting us by surprise, so...
I try my best to stop it.
Yeah. Let me just tell you, we're saving money, too. I mean, we're working our guys hard. You look at that Mizel building. If you haven't taken a tour of that thing, go check it out. They're doing that and trying to maintain all the maintenance on all the buildings that we have already had. I mean, they're working really hard.
That's it on maintenance?
That's on maintenance, yeah.
What's the next one?
Airport, just a question about the...if we...is there any way we can...he's back here just yammering with the... Greg, can you answer this question? Building maintenance under airport. I know we just...we basically fund you over and over again the $30,000, and sometimes you spend it, sometimes you don't. Looks like this year you won't. Is there any way we can trim a little bit of that this year?
Trim whatever you want.
I'm asking you. You're the guy who's supposed to be in charge of it. So if we trim $5,000 off of it, would it put you in a bad situation?
Nope, we handle it.
I'm recommending we just trim five grand off of it. Is that okay with everyone?
Where's that at?
It's under tab...
Forty-six-hundred dash oh-two.
So the...
The bottom line.
The income we're coming, bringing in in addition to the expenses will just be a little bit less.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
I support you on that, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, I will, too.
I know Greg can do it.
Thank you.
Five.
Five thousand, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr...
Next one, sir. The Coliseum question that I had was...has to do with TDC reserves, and we're not going to get back into that one, so...
All right, thank you.
Salaries, IT, that's tab... Where is it? I was going down the list through my tabs this morning, writing stuff down.
If you're looking at an increase, it's just a shift that was in administration.
Was that in when we added the security officer, from the security officer position?
No.
That's what I was...
Well, one of them was earlier, but we took that back out. That one came out and is over with the clerk now.
Let's see here, where is it at? County IT department, yeah, tab 22.
Tab 22.
It was just a 40 percent increase, and that's all I was asking.
It's just a shift of a salary that we already have that...if it isn't the one for the security officer, then it's where I moved part of Shannon over there, because he's working with them, and in fact, he's the one that's working on the ADA software issue right now and compliance issue.
Okay, so it's reduced in our end and it's increased on their end?
Yeah.
911. 911. Oh, I missed one. I'm sorry. Go back up to tab 13, extension. Is there any way we can... It's under line 46, under...I know it's not a very big amount, but it's under the repair and maintenance, and it's about the insulation on that wall. Is there any way we can wait one more year on that insulation?
We've been trying to get this done for a number of years. And, you know, in the past, we've used that...the room behind the classroom as storage. That's now being used as an office.
Okay.
So it's really...this one is really important.
Is this in conjunction with any kind of upgrades to anything that you're doing already currently? How many updates to the building? And are you tearing off...are you tearing off drywall already for something, and this is just a good time to do it?
No, it's because there...before, that was a storage unit. There wasn't...or a storage place that nobody was in there. Now we're having confidential information that the other person on the other side can hear.
All right, that's what I want to know. All right.
I take it we're not going to cut that?
No, not when you're dealing with confidential information. Make sure that it's done right.
I'm fine with it.
At least, that's my opinion. I mean, if y'all are good with it.
No. I'm good with it. Next one.
We're almost there.
We're on seven.
911.
Trying to get you there before lunch.
We got a big 9/11 contingency, Sheriff... It, we got a big nine-eleven contingency, Sheriff might be able to speak this since your communications.
Did you give us the tab number?
I don't know, it's, uh, tab number is, that contingency is there by statute on work.
Yeah, you can't.
Nothing can be touched.
She's done everything, she's.
What can it be used for?
You just opened the door for the sheriff to jump in here and try to get some money from you.
She can't even buy a car with.
Ronnie, we, Mitch, we, I've tried, I've tried every which way that I can to get some money to help with the salaries up there, some bonuses or something, and, and just like Ricky was saying, it's, it's by statute of what you can, what you can't spend on. But if you find a way, let me know, and I'll, because there is a pretty good amount built up on it.
So the question is, is what can the contingency be used for? That's.
Anything from the nine-one-one, from the call to the dispatch. After it reaches dispatch, it can't be used for machinery.
I can't even use that, once, once, once dispatcher hangs up, I can't use that money to get on the radio, to send, to send my guys there, it stops right there, it's crazy, but that's, but I.
The way the statute reads is pretty much anything from office furniture, different stuff in the office that they use, from, that assists from the time the call comes in to it reaches dispatch. But from the call leaving dispatch, it doesn't fund anything past that.
So the headsets, that would be part of the call? Is that correct?
What, the headsets?
Well, they'd have to take it off.
Part of that sixteen thousand dollars that she's looking for is twenty-eight hundred dollars is, it's headsets required by dispatch. And the other one is the router setup for Next Generation Core Services, thirteen thousand two twenty eight.
Is it not coming out of that?
Huh?
Is it not coming out of, or is it?
No, it's, it's set up in the budget, coming directly out of, out of the budget. That's why I was asking, is, because it's under machinery and equipment, line sixty-four hundred, that's under tab twenty-seven. Sixteen thousand one twenty-three, and.
She's, she's including the headset, you are correct.
The inclusive of the headset, so is the router part of the communication systems to get those calls in? And if it is, then can that also be taken out of?
She's got it listed there. She's got the indigital router and setup for Next Generation, it's there for thirty.
But it's not, but it's not showing as, it's still coming out of budget, and the question is, is can it come out of contingency since it's part of that call process?
Contingency or the nine-one-one funds?
The, whatever the.
Most of what's in the nine-eleven contingency.
We don't fund her.
This is coming out of your budget. What's in her budget comes out of the nine-one-one fund? What's left over from her budget is what goes into the nine-one-one contingency.
We don't fund her anything, so even if you cut it, it's her contingency, you can't have it.
Okay, so it's, so everything in here is being funded through nine-one-one?
Right.
Answers my questions.
What we're trying to do is texting, we've got to get this texting up and running, she needs to start spending money on that.
Yes, well, I know that there's.
No, they're working on it.
Yeah, that, yeah, they're working on that part now, the texting, the.
So you can spend money on it.
Alright, what's the next one? All out of contingency, okay. That, I don't think that's.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? Is it thirty-three? This one may be, this one may be the question. It's under machinery, is machinery and equipment and escrow. Fire station escrow, are we adding an additional two-hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to the fire station escrow? Is that what he's asking for?
We only added twenty-five.
We're rolling two and adding twenty-five thousand to it.
Okay, so it's a rollover plus twenty-five.
Correct.
Alright.
Is there another twenty-five you can find in there?
Pardon me?
Another twenty-five to roll in there?
We tried to find another hundred to put in there, but.
I'm ready.
We're trying to get the rest of this money from legislature, and.
Yeah.
We're going to have to have money in there to try to.
Where, where were you at, I'm sorry? Under line.
We're on line sixty-two hundred dash oh three. We rolled forward the two hundred, and we added twenty-five to it.
The question was, was it a rollover with the two hundred plus twenty-five, or was it an additional two-twenty-five? That's what I was asking.
No.
Just a twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
The second question is on machinery and equipment.
Were you talking about the fire station?
Yeah.
Escrow?
Fire department. Yes.
Okay.
My second question involves the next line, sixty-four hundred, and the increase of, what, nearly ninety-five thousand dollars in that budgeted item? And as I look down through your explanations.
Well, that's on your, that's fifty percent of the storage building and all that back on tab two.
Did we not change that over to, on something, we were adjusting some of the, where some of that would come out of the other day, were we not? Could some of it come out of EMS, some of it come out of fire?
I think we adjusted the EMS side.
Pay their contingency.
To come out of EMS contingency.
Yeah, side paid theirs.
But the one-twenty-one is in fires budget, and it's for the other half of the truck storage and the training.
Nothing you're doing in the fire budget is going to affect the general fund contingency. All this is going to affect is fire contingency.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you very much, sir.
Now, just to be sure, there was, we did twenty-five, I think he had twenty-five in his budget, but there was two-twenty there? Or just two hundred?
There was two hundred originally.
Building escrow.
You're talking about for the escrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I could have swore last year we wound up putting an extra twenty in.
We did.
At the end of the, at the end of the budget workshops last year, we put an extra twenty in there. Or at least we thought about it, I know we thought about it.
No, we did.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Another one under there.
We didn't have one-eighty budgeted and put twenty in with it, did we?
Mm-mm.
I don't remember the base amount we budgeted, I just, I do remember the conversation on the.
It was something that you got, actually, I think something you had cut from something and wanted to move it over there.
Yeah, because it was a last-minute thing, right at the end of the workshops.
Yep.
Ring bar shows two hundred, but I'll have to go back and look at my old notes.
I'd have to go back and look at Ken's.
I will say that I have had to contact Nina in the past year about some other minor things that were in everyone's notes that didn't show up, that got approved. So I don't know if it was just an oversight by Ken or what it was, but I'll be glad to go back and look at my notes, and Nina can look at hers, or Ken's, and see if we can find the other twenty.
Try to it this next year, come, take it out of its contingency.
Additional.
I mean, if it didn't show up, you're going to have to take it from someplace if you want to put it there, and it'll have to come out of your contingency.
So, the request, did, we went ahead and approved the request, didn't we, of the two-twenty-five?
Yeah, but.
For this year, but what he's saying is he's twenty thousand short, it should have been.
Two-forty-five.
Two-forty-five. If, because I, and I remember approving the twenty thousand last year.
But was the twenty thousand out of our contingency or out of the fire?
It was out of fire.
Well, I'm not, I'm just looking at his backup, and he clearly says added twenty-five thousand from study. So do you want it to be two-forty-five? You're already taking eighty-five out of his contingency for the pole barn, and ten thousand for that cancer insurance.
I'm fine with putting it at, just go ahead and make it two-fifty.
Yeah.
And if, I mean, it's, it's still in reserves if something.
Sure.
Something happens and we need it, it's there.
So you're taking another twenty-five out of the contingency and making it two-fifty?
I don't know what happened with the twenty from last year, but.
I don't know.
But I know we discussed it, and that it was supposed to be there.
Well, there's one other thing I still have to go back and look at, and try to figure out what happened to the money for Branford, for that building.
Yeah.
That's another example, I know it was there, I know we approved it, but I don't know why it isn't showing up now.
It shows up, it shows up in the, I don't know, I just saw it, under the rails, the trails, or rails to trails, yeah, it did, it was in there, because I saw a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the building.
No, we're not talking about the hundred thousand dollars.
We're talking about the building.
We're talking about the.
Public Works building now.
The annex, the commission annex down there that we were going to.
Oh, I know what you're going to.
Do a face of it.
That was in the budget, and it's gone now.
Well, I kept looking for, I thought I saw the Public Works annex in here, Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I didn't see it.
I was looking for a Branford.
It was, it was the Public Works, it was, it was administration, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, I saw this annex.
This annex was there.
Was in there, and that's where we pulled the money out of.
Well, that's they budgeted into one line, for whatever reason. I don't remember how much we budgeted for this one.
No, they were separated, I don't remember seeing them at some point, I just have to find it now, I don't know when it vanished.
What's your next one?
Alright, I'm going to Roden Bridge, if everyone wants one to move on.
You good with that, Mr. Hill?
Good.
Alright, a couple things on the Roden Bridge, safety on the operating supplies, can y'all explain? That would be, I'm sorry, it'd be tab thirty-eight, and it would be line fifty-two hundred dash zero one.
Now, just, unless it's a transfer in from general funds, also, Roden Bridge is not going to affect your contingency, because it's gas tax, other than.
Okay.
A couple of lines that are transfer ins from general fund.
Should I answer your question?
Does that include everything in it?
You'd have to, I, there's only a few lines that are transferring in from general fund, everything else in Roden Bridge is gas tax, correct?
That's correct.
So, any of that gas tax, even if you cut it, it's going to stay in Roden Bridge.
What about, is that storage building gas tax? The escrow on the storage building? I'm sorry, the storage building construction? You had forty thousand from last year, add another forty thousand.
Your storage building, if it's in the road department, it's going to be funded with gas taxes. We do have a transfer in for part of Public Works.
And that includes all of our equipment escrows as well?
Right.
I know, I can't, I don't, what is it, there's, there's a, I think there's a hundred thousand dollar transfer in for administrative stuff that may not be associated with the gas tax, that's, that's about it, isn't it?
Okay, and then, the other question that I had is, I don't understand what ten A is. Ten A reconstruction escrow, just.
Ten A is, here's the deal with ten A, ten A is a road that needs to be reconstructed, and we haven't ever been able to get the money for it. And now, we don't want it, now, in the last few years, we don't want to turn it in as a scrap or scot project because it's too small. We want to turn in large projects, projects. But we have to, we're going to have to go out there and make improvements to this road. If you come out of Welborn on ten A from the main intersection, one-thirty-seven has an intersection with ten A, if you're headed east.
Okay.
You're going to go out just a short distance, and you're going to fall into a swamp.
Yeah.
And then come back up out of it. That section in there needs to be torn out and replaced.
So it's, it's called ten A?
Ten A is the road.
Is it part of one-thirty-six?
No, it's just a split off of ninety, it runs through.
It splits off of.
Right there, right there to log cabins.
It splits off at log cabins, and you go into Welborn to the stop sign, and then continue going through that intersection east.
When you go through, when you go through.
Runs down past the old, or past the railroad tracks?
No.
No.
It runs all the way back out, it runs all the way back out to ninety.
It'll come back out to ninety eventually.
Okay.
We call it Old Ninety.
But when you, when you go down, when you go.
It's a straight road that, that used to cut off by the log.
And now I got it.
When you go down a little ways, it hits a bog down there, and in that bog, the road's kind of disentert.
It's gotten so bad that we have to do something, or we're going to have to just shut the road down.
Okay.
And, like I said, we don't want to turn it down as a DOT project because.
They're going to deny it.
It's too small a project.
Yeah, we want to get a big project, not a small one.
Alright, you got another one? Recreation? Huh?
What tab?
I'm sorry, tab is, yeah, forty-one. You've got a couple of things here, I just want to see if we can maybe bump them, or cut them, or, you know, borrow some from.
District?
Yeah, hang on, let me get to the thing here.
You said what district?
Oh, district is, I think that would be District Four. No, I don't know where the boat ramps that you're talking about.
Next.
Well, he's been generous to me, so I can be generous to him, but I wanted to just kind of know what we're looking at, that, with that.
On the.
That would be line sixty-two hundred, and for that matter, sixty-two, sixty-two hundred dash oh one would be the soccer relocation. I know we have, we've talked about that field up there and getting it relocated.
Right.
And, and you're going to have to refresh my memory, because it's bad, I'm getting old, not as old as you, but I'm getting old. That is, that I, I thought that we had discussed, when we had discussed relocating this field, that there would be possibly some, some, what's the word?
There will be.
Yeah.
There will be.
There will be.
That's reimbursement, that's, that's a word I couldn't just, it's old age.
Yes.
Reimbursement.
That's the, that's the expense of what the grant was from the state, so that is what we'll have to, but, yeah, so you'll have a.
Move it to another location.
If it, if it all goes through and the move happens, then you'll show a revenue coming in from that.
Okay, I wanted, that was a question that I had, and then the boat ramp improvements, I'm just.
One of the commission meetings, we discussed adding money to, for boat ramp improvements, so that's what we've done.
We just, there's two boat ramps that are blown out completely, that are to the point of not being used, if we don't do something with them.
Sounds like they're over there in.
I'll tell you right what, you want to know, but.
Yes. And on the concessions, is there anything we can do on the concession updates and upgrades that can wait? Or is it vital?
I think it was tiling the floors, we got more of a safety concerns than anything, but.
That was, I think that was in your backup.
Right.
Where are you seeing that at?
I think it was part of his backup, if I remember correctly, because I wrote it down as, as that.
Yeah, we had planned on tiling the floors in the, in there, so we could, just, it cleans better than being on concrete.
Where'd I get that, that kind of thing, concessions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd ask Mr. Richardson to leave that in there, please. I just think that we try to stay on top of those improvements and.
I'm fine with rec budget, if y'all are. There wasn't no changes I want to make there.
What about the, the CD? What CD building? What is, what is that?
We don't have a CD building.
Well, it says, and I gotta, I gotta dig it out, because it's, it's an escrow. It's, you know what, never mind, that's, I'm sorry, that was under construction. That's the next question, so it doesn't even deal with you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Next one, Bo.
CD construction, what is that? CD building under construction, that would be tab, um, what was it? 42?
Y'all want a break for lunch?
I'm almost done.
I know, I was trying to get you through to lunch.
Renovations and.
Make construction. Getting hungry.
Renovation and construction.
Yeah. Where's that, where's that funded out of?
That's coming out of your fiscally constraint tax.
The what?
The fiscally constraint tax from the state.
Okay.
We use some of that to put in there for renovation and construction. The CD building escrow is what, part of the money was earmarked that the sheriff turned back in last year to earmark 200,000 of it for a new CD building.
CD, what does CD stand for?
Criminal Division.
Criminal Division.
Thank you.
So, that's in that, and, um, everything else is balanced forward.
Last question, our last one is solid, solid waste under, I think it's 44. Put this one down, is it 44?
44.
Or if it was, yeah, 44, it'd be page 2 under line 63001. That's that Wellburn collection site. There was, I had a question about it. We moved that money over into the construction part of it, I assume, correct? Of the Wellburn construction site? Looks like, is that, is that where the current budget of $200,000 is zeroed out for this year? And then 200,000 showed up in the construction part of it?
So, yeah, yes, we did, we are not spending it in the current year, we'll be spending it.
But we spent 49,000. Is that the, was that for the property that we were trying to turn around and sell, that we didn't want?
Probably was. Oh, no, it was probably for the new property.
Sorry?
Probably for the new property that we just purchased.
The new property, okay.
That would've been for the new property.
Is there any reserves that we can utilize for this? Is it, are there any reserves or?
This isn't gonna help your contingency, if that's what you're after.
That's what I wanted to know. See, look at that.
All right, so moving on to the next one. That was it?
Thank you for your, for indulging me on this.
You're good.
Got 30,000.
Hey, 30,000 is, $30,000 is the.
You're good.
It will help.
All right, it's 12 o'clock. I'm assuming everybody's probably hungry, because I am. Yes, sir, Mr. Baker?
Can I just ask you a question? I have a phone meeting after lunch. I didn't know if y'all have any questions.
I didn't have any of anybody else.
We'll, we'll just make the cuts ourself.
Yeah. We'll inform you. Well, you, we'll let you know. All right, y'all want a break for lunch?
I, I got one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Oh, seeing as how we run, I want to apologize to everybody that we've run over in our lunch break, and y'all get with Commissioner Richardson. He has, he is taking care of lunch for everyone, what I was informed of.
I think we had this conversation at another meeting that he didn't.
And this is the day that we are cashing in.
Do we have to follow him? Is he gonna tell us where he's going?
He's probably gonna run.
So, we see y'all back here about, about 1:00?
Yes.
All right.
You're gonna be stretched to get back there at 1:00?
Say 1:15. Is that better?
Right.
1:30?
Mr. Richardson, you'd made it through your 15 top most critical?
I'm done.
Mr. Fleming, did you have any?
Mr. Richardson did all my. I ain't gonna add no fuel to the fire. I'm, I'm quite, I'm satisfied.
All right, good. Mr. Stapleton?
I, I mean, I think it's probably time to talk with Sheriff some more, I guess.
And we can talk more fire, too, if y'all want to.
Yeah. You got anywhere y'all want to jump in, jump in. I see the sheriff get red-faced, and Eddie get red-faced there. Nina, what, with what cuts we just made, what did that bring our contingency back to?
441-333.
Oh, wait, wait. I'm sorry, what was that number, Miss Nina?
441-333.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
And, all of you may have this on your list, but I don't believe you ever decided what you're gonna do about the additional funding for chip seal. We talked about that, and then we kinda set it to the side.
Yep. Was that 250 number, right?
That's correct.
Hmm. Wow. And it's not in there, right?
It is not in there.
That's, we just go through everything and then go back and.
I can show you 200.
Sir?
I said I can show you 200. Not probably. Is that the list of roads you want done?
Mm-hmm. Well, there's nothing here, though.
In your district?
I don't know why that number's in there, under this. There's nothing there.
Excuse me?
Nothing to move, it's right here. About that, I don't know.
Balance forward feels like I can string.
In renovation.
No, no.
And.
Yeah. One of y'all mentioned Hughes Road, what did y'all say?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That Hughes Road project, what, would we be able to get that money if we held that over till next year?
No, it's being done right now, I think. Are you talking about being spent in next year's amount? 190,000? I know they're doing the work already, so, my understanding.
Y'all lost me on that. Say it again, now.
The Hughes Road extension.
What about it?
Hughes Highway extension.
Mm-hmm.
You asked about the money being paid out in next year's budget?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what?
Wouldn't that help?
I didn't know they'd already started. I was saying maybe we could just postpone that till next year and have that money.
It would cost more next year if we had to send them back out, though.
I think what he's getting out around to is can we pay it out of District 5's chip seal money?
And that would leave, that would leave that.
No.
Well, can we look at?
Y'all already proved that. Just leave that alone. Proved in a, in a regular meeting.
Ricky, what are you looking at? I'm on tab 43.
Uh.
Where are you at?
I'm on same tab.
Tab 43?
Yes, sir.
381-116?
Yes, sir.
42.
Is it out?
It's, I think he's looking at, you're looking at the transfer in and then the balance forward.
Yeah, your blue, go to your blue tab, blue dot behind tab 43.
There wasn't a request there, that's why I was asking Mr. Harris, but it's, it's in there, he says.
It's, it's on the bottom, well, it transfers in under, or it balance forwards down below.
Right.
Right.
Transferred in this current budget year, so it went into next year's balance forward, and a reserve on the outside.
Right. Where was it transferred in from? I saw returns from the.
Fining forfeiture.
Fining forfeiture from last year, I believe.
Yeah, when it came in, it was set aside as an escrow.
I thought that we had done something like that. I know we talked about it.
You want to grab that for some of these other projects?
It.
We can, up to the board.
Yeah, because I mean, it's escrow now, you'd have to put $200,000 aside a year for the next 10 years to do that project. And I don't see, which I think I said back then, I didn't see that on, it wasn't on my 10-year plan, so I don't have a problem moving it out. That's two.
So, you're gonna take it out?
Is there a third one?
You got that third one?
Okay. You get that, Nina? So, we're gonna move that back into contingency to. That'll remove your contingency back to 641-333? 641-333.
Wait, that's, I don't understand something. I spent, how long did I take to go through 15 items to get $30,000?
You picked the wrong items.
I did ask about this, though.
You got 200 at one shot.
Definitely asked about this, just didn't know what it was. Maybe I just brought it up.
No, you brought it to light. Increase your chip seal budget, then, or what do you want to do? Do y'all want to talk about that now, or did y'all have additional?
Whatever you don't.
Lines that you wanted to look at?
Y'all want to go through some others? Is there any more to go through?
I, I know there'll be, there should be some that comes back to us, because I know at a minimum, from the, um, some of the constitutionals going back and looking through their insurance or readjusting that number, that's gonna be maybe another 30. I don't know what else, other than the sheriff coming back, back to us, or.
Mm-hmm. That's gonna be 400, I think he was telling me at lunch.
That's, I overheard that.
That was amazing. That's amazing.
You see how quick that happens?
If you'll just do 360, that'll get us to a million-dollar contingency.
So, feel like you can get there, Mr. Sheriff?
We go ahead and make that commitment.
We'd like to, we'd like to be proactive, you know, go ahead, we don't want to kick can down the road.
Commissioners, I'm gonna make a comment if I could. Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
We make it, this whole process makes it just as difficult on a sheriff as it does on commissioners.
Oh, yeah.
We have all, for years, ignored the fact that we were, we are over-budgeting the sheriff's department. And all evidence suggests that's the fact, because we've got the numbers. These are documented numbers, we didn't make them up. It would be just as easy for you to set this money aside. What Commissioner Richardson was suggesting was that you've got two contingency funds running parallel to one another, one in the sheriff's department, and one in the board's budget, and there's no reason to have two of them. So, you could be budgeting projects and getting, providing service to the taxpayers out here, and still have a sufficient contingency line there to take care of any urgent matters that come up at the sheriff's department and at the county commission. And we know at the very least, it's on average $350,000. I mean, that's, that's just a fact. So, you could easily, and another thing you could stop doing is, you know, this arbitrary number, this division separation and the, the way these funds are divided, and part of it going into fining forfeiture, y'all could make some correction to that now, and stop putting so much of it over there, because it doesn't need to be there.
Are you talking about the, the split?
The, the split.
The lorm split. I've talked.
That's an arbitrary thing that was done years ago, and there's no reason for it to be occurring the way that it is. We just set ourselves up for a phony budget number, only to have those funds come back each year. And it, it just doesn't have to be that way. That's simply an observation, but it's an observation based on what we do year after year, and what the numbers prove.
Are you talking about the 50-50 ad lorm split?
Right.
Most counties don't get anywhere near that. I've talked to all the commissioners out there, just, a lot of the commissioners in FAC just saying, hey, what do you guys do? And they're saying, the average, probably 30% to 40%, something like that, it's a, it's a split either.
Well, when was that voted, I mean, we'd have to go back to see when that was voted on. It's been that way the 24 years I've been here. But if you change the percentage of the ad lorm split, you're gonna have to put more money into the fining forfeiture to fund other than ad lorm, or Mr. Powell has told me you could combine both funds, it didn't really matter.
I think, I think what you're talking about is just having it all not considered fining forfeiture, just basically all general fund, ad lorm, and whatever the number be that.
And then decide what you're gonna budget.
And then decide what you're gonna budget, yeah.
Because it has.
Not saying it reduces or doesn't reduce, he's just saying that to have just a midway line, saying automatically half goes here, half goes here. He's saying just, it's ad lorm, and the budget is what it is.
Over the 24 years, it has created a faulty assumption that it's a reflection of actual expense and cost for budgeting purposes, and it isn't. And we know that to be a fact. So, there's no reason to do it like that. The board ultimately decides what that budget is gonna be and approves the sheriff's budget every year. And you can do it without having that 50-50 split occur the way that it has been forever.
There's also different restricted monies in that fund, too, the $65 and the $15. I guess you could combine all that. You're talking about combining fining forfeiture in general together into one big fund.
To, well, to a greater extent than it is right now. It doesn't need to be, no, I'm just talking about the, the 50-50, it doesn't have to be 50-50. It can be something different than that, without getting into all the restricted issues.
The kind of way I look at it is, I see that as the county grows, obviously the sheriff's department needs are gonna grow as well, like, as well as everyone else's. But at the 50-50 split, I mean, that's, that's a lot of growth in the sheriff's department compared to, that's one department. And we've got a lot of other departments that are, that we deal with, that have to handle the growth as well, the roads, the, you know, and everything else. So, I could understand that, and I'm not suggesting making a change this year, but obviously something that we need to look at going forward to adjust that number, because as businesses grow, come in, it doesn't take a, a huge addition to our sheriff's department in order to service those additions, but it sure does take a lot from us to take care of those people. And make sure that our economic development's staying on course.
So, you would put more ad lorm money in fining forfeiture? You would change the split?
If you reduce the split, if you were to reduce the split, you would have to. My, my point is only that if you, if you continue with the split the way it's being done, it continues to perpetuate that faulty assumption that that's an accurate reflection of the expense, and it isn't. It was an arbitrary number whenever it was created.
Just giving an example, and I, by no means am advocating for this, but a mill brings in $1.6 million, roughly. If the board raised the millage rate to 10, that brings in an additional 1.6, but under the way it's split, it automatically splits half of that out to fining forfeiture. And that's what he's saying, as revenues increase, it doesn't automatically shift one way or the other. It's ultimately whatever winds up being budgeted, and by continuing to move forward with a, this fining forfeiture half, and the other half going into general, it gives them the assumption that automatically half is, it's a benchmark that, um, and that benchmark goes both ways. If the board turns around and lowers it a millage point, does that mean you automatically reduce the budget by half a mill? Or, you know, so it could, if that's the bar you set, it works both ways. It could hurt the sheriff's budget. If it goes, if the board reduced the millage rate, it, it could drastically increase it if the board upped the millage rate. Same way with revenues, as the values, properties increase, it just takes away that faulty assumption that automatically half goes here and half goes there. What?
I don't know what started the 50-50.
I don't either.
Go back and see.
Been there since I've been here.
Been there since I've been there.
You were three when they put it that way.
But the difference is small enough, that revenue makes up the difference.
It's all gonna come from the same spot, regardless of what we call it, whether it's.
Money.
Oh, I'm just, I'm, what tab was the contingency under, and then that capital, what was it, capital outlay?
Board contingency?
Yeah, I just, I, I thought it was under 5, I'm just not, I just, I'm overlooking it, I guess.
That was on 5. Tab 5 is the board's contingency.
There, I found it now.
What it was?
Yeah, I found it, I just didn't flip back enough pages. All right, what, um, what are we, what are we doing?
It's page 4.
Oh, I found it. I, I just, I was looking for it just a minute ago, and we were talking about something else, and I couldn't find it. So, you started the conversation, and I kinda got sidetracked, Mr. Harris. What, where were we going with that?
Well, I was just coming, I think it was, who was it? Commissioner Stapleton mentioned the sheriff. That's when I spoke up and said, well, you haven't ever resolved that issue, because you're at this point now, and what's outstanding, you had asked the question, what's, what is outstanding that anyone knows about? What we don't know is what the sheriff may come in with.
Right.
I could fix that for you real quick and make a suggestion that you cut it by 350,000, and the sheriff would applaud me, and we could go to dinner this evening. But, because it would make it easier on him, he wouldn't have to worry about that pencil. But the reality is, you look at the numbers yourself, that's where they've been. It's, we're over-budgeting by at least $350,000 every year. If you move that, put it in your contingency, and then deal with any emergencies that may come up, you have the ability to do that.
He's coming forward.
He said, hold on, but listen. Mr. Chairman?
Is he wearing a gun?
The sheriff's back, and he's got a gun.
I mean, I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Harris, but, you know, here, again, if I had that crystal ball, I could tell you, you know, to the penny what I was gonna bring back, and, and then, here again, my worry is that, you know, just like every, them others sitting, they gotta get elected just like I do, and if I come up here and say, hey, board, I'm short of the money, you know, I can see what the perception's gonna be, is, hey, hey, sheriff, you're not smart enough to run your own budget? And, and here again, we, you know, I try to run, you know, do it, run a tight ship and be a good steward of the people's money. I mean, will you take it now or you take it later? I mean, I'm not sure what the, I mean, I just, I just don't want, I won't say I just don't want to run short, but here again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop my pencil and, and, you know, and I know we can give some back, you know. Can it be that much? I don't know until I start looking pen to paper, but, you know, I just, you know, I just think that you're, you're, that's kinda, kinda put me a little tight right there for that, for that type of money, but, I mean, here again, give me time to look and see.
Well, I was just trying to make it easy on you. I mean, the reality is, if it's over on the budget, on the board's side, then it's there, and you're not in a crisis if something comes up.
Yeah, but I still gotta come back before these five gentlemen say, hey, guys, I overspent, you know, and that makes me, you know, that's not good for me.
Well, I've got confidence in these guys to step up if, if there's a demonstrated emergency, I think they'll step up. I mean, we've done it.
If you, if y'all just give me some time, you know, to, to put some pen to paper, let me just, let me just see what I can do, first off. If there's any way that we can do that.
Sheriff, I can give you, I can give you a really good suggestion. Let's just keep the budget. the budget last year's numbers and we'll, let's start right there and see if you can cut any lower than that.
Well, I kinda like, I kinda like your 999 numbers there.
Well, you're not far off of those 999 numbers, by the way.
Listen, his blood sugar was low when he said that. He hadn't had lunch yet.
And I went to the hut and got my blood sugar back.
Yeah, but if we can, if you just give me some time to check and see, I mean, here again, I just, you know, I, you know, I just, you know, some of this stuff is, you know, that, I know I can cut, but some of this stuff is mandated and, and, like I say, the employee situation, I, you know, I'd like, I'd like to give more raise than I did, but I, I know I can't, but just, if you just give me some time to look, get pen to paper.
I know the, uh, the state, especially with the trooper deal, that, that's hurting retention, but in all honesty though, we're not gonna be able to compete with 40,000.
No, we're not, you know, and if we can, if I can, you know, give them a little, little something, a little, little hope, you know, you know, that down, that they'll stay with me, but, you know, when you get, you know, three, I mean, I lost three good, three good, three good deputies, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, with the, with the state insurance, I mean, $180, you got your whole family covered.
Yeah, exactly, and-
And then $40,000 starting pay.
Yeah.
There's just, there's no way we can compete for that.
And see, and that's, that's the problem I'm facing and, you know, and then what happens is that, you know, the applicants we get, you know, bless their heart, you know, there's some are not probably up to par and, and I, I just, you know, that reflects on me if, you know, if we, if I get someone that's not, they're capable to do the job because of the low pay, that reflects on me, it reflects on everybody, it reflects on Swan County, especially me.
But the, um, the state's not hiring up, they're, they're not, I know they hired several, but they're not increasing the amount of deputies or troopers they're putting on the road, are they?
Well-
They max out, I mean-
Yeah, they're, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure they're increasing, but they're, they're just like every law enforcement agency, they're just shorthanded.
Right.
And, uh, and then they're, you know, like I say, and they're, they're enticing my guys around here, you know, I think they got, they must have a recruiter station here in Swan County because I'm, I'm getting hit hard by them.
Well, they, they up their pay, got the benefit, and they don't make them go to South Florida anymore to start their career.
Yes, that's, that's the whole thing right there. When they hire on, they, they pretty much pick where they wanna go.
Yeah.
They want to stay in Swan County, they stay in Swan County, that's, that's really hurting me there too.
That's probably hurts you more than the pay.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that's, all, all the combination of all of them, you know, entices them to go.
I do have a question. And we've got your budget in our book behind tab 48, and when I go to your salaries. We've, we've got a, we've got a schedule here that shows your salary increases and we're showing them at 4.48 percent. That's before the, you know, all the other additional expenses that go with it, but did you not do the 1 percent and the 50 cents?
Yes, yes.
So the 4.48 percent is the 50 cents an hour plus the 1 percent?
Yes, sir, it is, yes, sir. Uh, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, that's what the raise is, yes, sir.
That's what it comes to.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
He's got the wrong health in there, are you looking at the health?
Yeah, yeah, we owe you-
No, I didn't look at the health.
Yeah, we owe you back on health now, we got, we didn't do the 2 percent.
It's not gonna be that much.
21,000.
About 22.
Yeah, 21,781.
Not only because I'm, I'm, I'm just pro law enforcement, but it's due to the fact that I appreciate you standing up for your officers, looking out for them, trying to keep your officers and everything. But, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I feel like we should, uh, let him, as he said, let him sharpen his pencil, see where he can cut. And, and Sheriff, due to the fact that the money is there, as the county administrator said, that, you know, I don't think we'll be hard-hearted if, you know, if you had a dying need for anything, but I, I think that we oughta give him the opportunity to, uh, let him get back with us if they ain't a dying need. We're trying to, I guess we're trying to get to that point, close to the million dollars, you know, to, uh, you know, in the contingency, but at the same time, we wanna do what's best for the citizens of Swan County. And I appreciate you looking out for your officers, and I'm, I'm one that, that I'm, I'm just pro law enforcement, I, I know, I know what it's like when your life is on the line out there. It ain't a good feeling when you losing some of your best officer.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Richard Fleming, and like I say, I, I mean, I, I know that, that we can, we can do some cuts here and, and help out the contingency fund, you know, this go around here and, and here again, I'm, and I, here again, I'm all willing to help, you know, because, you know, it, but just like we're saying, I'm gonna, I wanna fight for my department just like, you know, everybody else wants to fight for their department and so forth and, and do the best we can because when I gotta go back and face my guys, they gonna say, "Well, Sheriff, well, you know, I can be letting us down" or something, you know. But, but I, and bottom of the line, or bottom line is I know I can do some cuts and, and help and make sure that my guys have what they need and then also give, give back to the, for y'all, for your contingency funds.
Mr. Uh-
Yes, sir.
Chairman, let me, one quick question. Sheriff, Sheriff, how many, typical on average, how many offers, patrol officers or positions do you have open at one time? At any given time during the year, how many usually are open?
You mean that for-
Positions are open.
For the, I mean, for the, I mean, is it for-
In general.
Yes, I mean, all, all departments or just?
Are you asking for a number of employees total?
No, 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 no. Other than corrections, but for, for the criminal division, law enforcement, law enforcement. How many on average positions are open throughout the year?
So unfielded.
Particularly, they're gonna be in patrol officers more than-
Yeah, well, I say that, that average, you know, and just like, say, these, these three, or these three that's left is, I got left two, left, left one time, so I got two open right now on, on the patrol side. I just, I just hi, I just hired two.
Okay.
And then, and then after I got them two hired, I was good to go, and then, then I say just the two just left, both of them simultaneously to go to highway patrol. So now I got two open. So, I mean, so there's not, there's not many, you know, you know, like, you know, this is probably the, the worst I've had, you know, because I've had, had two, filled them, and then I got, then two left, and now I gotta fill them, I hadn't filled them yet. So, so actually you would've had four kinda, kind of at the same, same time there, but I got two filled, one still, one still in training, and I was able to get one from, actually still one from Brian Lamb over there, him and the fake, and that was, that's been in for five years, so he was a good, a good hire, and I was able to get him on the road by himself, you know, to serve us over here. But now the other one just got out of, out of the academy, so he's gotta go through the OFTO program. But there's not many, you know, at one time, and I, I try not to do that because, I'm telling you, as a patrol officer, I know how it is to be short out there and, and, you know, when, I can tell you when, when you're one short, that, that hurts your shift-
Yeah.
-throughout the whole thing, so I, I prioritize that as getting people hired because it's, you know, not only is it hard for the officers to take the calls, but it's a safety factor because if you're short help and you don't have the proper backup, so I always try to get, the patrol is, is, to me, it's always been the meat and potatoes of the sheriff's office, to get them taken care of, taken care of, and then, because, because when you call 911, that's who, that's who you're gonna see first, is that patrol officer, you know. So I, and so I wanna keep, as, as, as a well-qualified person and experienced, and plus the equipment, you know, you know, if they have some wore-out car, it breaks down on the way to your, to your call, then, you know, they're, they're no good to you. So that's why, I mean, I really, I really emphasize on the patrol part.
What about corrections side?
The, as far as spots over there?
Yeah.
Um, normally, no, normally that stays, that stays full. Now, I'm down two over there, and, and the reason that was is one, one retired, and then one, I think, moved the call rider somewhere, two for, I'm not sure, just reasons, family reasons or something, but normally the, the correction stays, I stay pretty good with them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A quick question, he's asking a question. So this number here on the salaries and wages, is that considering you have a full house? I mean, is that what you budget that for, obviously?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
How many employees does that total?
I think 115.
Okay.
What's the difference between the incentives and the supplements?
Okay, the, the incentive, the incentive pay is the, is where, is where you, where you go to school, you know, like your college classes, or we give, send them classes for that, and that's, you get extra pay for that.
And the supplement would be, about $8,000 certain officers?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's for like, um-
Skaters.
Um, for like clothing allowance and all.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got a quick question for you while we're back on it. On the computer expenses side of it, can you kinda enlighten me on what that is, or is that anything that overlaps with what we're doing with Barry's office now or, uh, computer expenses?
Yeah, uh, no, that's, well, some of that is, you know, that's where the, we created that position, or we are, a part, part of it, we paying for Vance, Vance Baker, with the security, that's, that's some of that is figuring in that part right there. And, uh, I'd have to get Michelle to figure out what, what it all entails, but I know, I know that's, that increased because of, you know, higher Vance, now, that's where his, his part would be plugged into.
I, uh, I don't have a whole lot left to say on the matter other than that, uh, we're all in a tough position. I mean, we're up here trying like, hard as we can to, to make these numbers work for everybody. And I just, you know, I'll, I'll close my comments on it with saying that I ask you to go study it hard as you can and do the best you can for us, and, and it'll come back to us and we'll go from there. I will say this though, as you, as you were working on that, please remember that us as a board, we're, we're in a tough position because as soon as we finish this, you're gonna be looking at us about radios, and we've had these discussions, so it just, I ask you to try to think about that while you're doing these numbers for us because that's a big number too that we gotta get worked out at some point, and we all realize that.
Yeah, um, and you're, and you're right, Mr. Stapleton, I mean, you're, and here again, you know, you know, the board, you know, and I, listen, I have, I have no heartache with the board because even before you got here, you know, I think everybody else was here that I worked with, you know, and, and they, and I, I can't complain about what, what they've done for me, you know, especially with the smart cop and, and everything that I'm able to upgrade the sheriff's office with. So I, so I, I'm, you know, I'm very much appreciative of y'all, and I know that the times are tough right now, and here again, I'm, I'm gonna drop my pencil. Uh, but on, on the radios, and this is, I know a time for another discussion and all, but, you know, we've put these meetings off because of, you know, of what's happened here in the recent events. But, you know, we have basically took the board's advice and, and it's cut quite a bit from that. I know Williams, we met with Williams, I wasn't able to because they met the same, same time that we was here at this last budget meeting, and they've cut quite a bit. So I think you're gonna see that number come down quite a bit, you know, to, to see if this will, this will work for everybody. So, so we're, we're continually cutting on that there too.
And I appreciate that, and, you know, it's, uh, just like that with that conversation about the radios, I mean, you know, we're saving money at the end of the day. I truly feel for the people. You're, you're doing it on your side, the radio company, whichever one that may be, is doing it on their side, so, you know, with asking questions and working on the process, I mean, I just feel like that, uh, we're doing the right by the people at the end of the day.
Yes, sir.
For each one of these things, radios or our budget per, for the year, I just, so, and that's what, that's what we're here for.
Yes, sir.
Do the best we can, so we appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else have anything?
Mr. Hancock's got it.
I have a question. You all sitting here with your own whip and your own budget, it'll be all expenses. I have a question on the revenue projections. And, you know, if you have the, that number of 350,000, if you look at your revenue, your projected revenues of what you're actually budgeting over the previous year, and I'll just use, this is on the board's revenue, if you look at ambulance fees, the market is 2 million, they're 2.3 million.
We'll come over here.
I can't read here really well.
We'll come up to the mic, sir.
Need you speaking to the mic, Mr. Hancock.
I can do that.
You on tab five, sir?
Yes, tab five.
If you'll tell us, we'll follow right along with you.
Two under revenues, tab five. The account would be, um, 342,600 ambulance fees. Your current budget is $2 million. Projected to bring in 2.3 million plus, but yet you turn right around and you're only requesting another 2 million.
You could have a healthy year.
It's because you budget conservatively on there.
I'd like to comment on that too.
Go ahead.
Right now, we're at 1.9 million, and after having a conversation with James last week, there's a new Medicaid something coming down, Randy, do you know about that?
That's what we were talking about, a potential cap on some of the expenses.
Y'all can finish on that, but he knew he was gonna go down.
There's two things that go into that. The Medicare possibility of some of the, the revenues that can come in from Medicare, but the new Medicaid, Medicaid legislation just took out the COPCN rules with, with a Medicaid patient, those are all done through a, an outsourced type call center, basically, that when they get, when the, when the hospital has a Medicaid patient to be transferred, they call that, the, the one-stop call center type deal. They get whoever they want to transport it, and they give you an authorization number whether they approve it or not for payment. With the new legislation that just passed, they can call anybody they want to call to come take that Medicaid transport. Medicare, insurance, private pay, all of those are still protected by the COPCN rules. But Medicaid, they can, they can call anybody on their list, they can, they can call a truck from Alabama to come pick up somebody and take them if that's what they wish to do and we can't stop it.
I may be wrong, but this sounds very similar to what they did to the, um, Swan Valley Transit.
Transport.
Swan Valley Transit. Used to that, um, they funded directly the transit authority to provide, um, the Medicare, not, not, whatever it is that they're doing, and then they went to a, like an HMOs type situation now where, now on that side, they require them to bid it out, and they start with the lowest bidder and go down the list to fill the need.
Right.
So essentially, it's the same thing now.
In, in a nutshell, yes.
So they took away these, they done away with the certificate of need, is that what they did away?
Or Medicaid only.
For Medicaid only.
That's the only, the only ones that, that it applies to. All the others, the certificate of need still applies, but for Medicaid, they did do away with that, they just did that in, in the last, at our last state meetings we went to, that was reported to us in the legislature meeting.
Gotcha.
This is trying to recognize a potential reduction in revenue next year.
But those providers still have to be able to provide at least the minimum-
That is correct.
...quality or care for that patient, that, it's not like they're gonna just be pulling up in a van and picking them up, taking them somewhere.
Correct.
I'll sign up for that service.
1965 or newer.
His goal was to get to 2.3, but we're just not sure we got enough finance.
You're never sure, but that's just-
We're at 1.9, so.
You're, I understand, it's just a projection. But Jamie, also build in extra in the EMS contingency fund for this very occurrence.
It was three years, yes, and we spoke about it at the workshop, Sally was building it up.
So, you know, I'm just saying, take, go back and look at some of these projections. I don't know how these are derived, but, you know, if you-
All your state revenues are-
Well, all your state revenues, you have to budget at 95 percent or lower.
Right.
So-
Ad valorem.
Ad valorem, sales tax, all of that, you have to budget at 95 percent.
That's not my question. My question is looking strictly at your revenues. I ain't worried about the 95 percent, I understand that. But here, I, and I just picked ambulance fees just because it-
Right.
You know, there's, you know, $316,000 that's projected over what you're budgeting, current or, uh, requested. you're budgeting, current or, uh, requested. But if you, if you under, if you consistently underestimate, at the end of the year, you bring in, just like you were talking about with defining forfeiture.
Yeah, and we spent some of that very money earlier in our budget workshop, out of the contingency line.
Yeah.
So that's where, that's where it gets reconciled in the end. If there's something over the budget, it's gonna go in contingency, and then in next year's budget workshop, we decide how much of it we want to draw down and use it in expenses. Because we're also trying to build a fire station.
Oh, yeah.
So we were trying to, we are behind on equipment, uh, and we're behind on a fire station, and the contingency lines are the best place to put money to try to fund those improvements in level of service going forward. But we had to spend some of it in the current year, so even though we're projecting that in the current year it may be two point three, that's, that's what we're hoping. We hope it comes in high, so that we put more in contingency. Next year, we're trying to reconcile the reality that there's been a change in the law, and it's probably gonna come in lower, so we're, we're showing that it's gonna potentially come in lower, at two million.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't want to budget at two point two and get one point nine.
By the time you get to your third quarter next year, you might have a pretty good feel what is, how much different it's gonna be than the projected two million.
Yep.
We might, we might be able to say, well, it's only gonna come in at one point eight. It may be two point one, but we won't know until we get into about the third quarter of next year.
Well, since, uh, they changed over to the new billing company, what, two years ago? Consistently, the revenues have come up.
Oh, yeah.
For the past three years.
Yeah.
Okay, but it, everything y'all are saying is fine and dandy, but in other cases, um, looking down, and I'm just gonna pick one here, the additional three dollar driver's education, your current is fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Your projected is thirteen thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars, but yet you're requesting another fourteen thousand. So what you're projecting to bring in is less than what you had budgeted for this year.
That's off of the traffic ticket.
Well, I, I'm... I'm just saying, where's the sense in how you do it? Yeah, where's the sense of how you project all of this? State revenues, we understand.
Well, our projected is based on what's happening in the current year, not what was budgeted eighteen months ago. You know what I mean?
That's my point.
Right now, you got...
If you're going on what's, you're getting in the current year, and...
You got ten thousand right now in driver's ed coming in, and it goes right back out on tab twenty-six to the school board.
I'm just using that as an example. I'm just saying, your projections, how do you do it? That's, that was, that's what I'm getting to, is because there's, there's monies here that looks like coming, you know, that isn't being utilized yet. Now, if it comes in at the end of the year, like Randy was talking about, that's all well and good. That's how you always look good at the end of the year, I guess.
That's how you don't get in trouble.
Right. Well, it's how you don't get in trouble, but also it helps you when you're budgeting in the next year, when you're in need of revenue, and you don't want to take it out of general revenue, and you've got a contingency that you've built up against a, a fire or ambulance, uh, contingency from EMS.
And in, in years past, there's been times when it saved our butt, where we've had a, something come up, and we've had to find funding for it, and we've had unanticipated revenues there to have come in over the year to pay for it.
Good term. I gotta remember, unanticipated.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Unforeseen.
If we're on this subject, might as well ask this question.
We'll ask it.
You may have, you may, forgive me if you said something the other day, uh, my mind was somewhere else at different times, uh, when you were talking about different things, but, uh, small county cert tax, uh, we got an estimate of, of it jumping up considerably for this year, uh, this next year compared to this year. Can you...
Where are you seeing that at?
Uh, in general revenue, page one.
What tab?
Uh, tab number is, we're under, oh, back under five again. I guess I didn't...
I see it.
Under five.
I got you.
I'm just curious where the, what, what changed, that's gonna change our small county cert tax up so much in revenue?
Our values went up in the property taxes, so fine and forfeiture got in an extra half a million dollars, so we moved small county cert tax back to general.
Okay.
Because we have to use that to offset fine and forfeiture shortage.
Okay.
So if you look at fine and forfeiture's revenue, you'll see that it goes down because the ad valorem went up.
What tab is that? Just...
Fine and forfeiture revenue is twenty-five.
Yes, I do see that. Thank you.
It's split, it's not split, it's whatever is short in fine and forfeiture, we have to use small county cert tax to cover it.
Well, you just brought the question, so I figured I'd ask it.
Which, when you say short in fine and forfeiture, you just mean...
Cert tax.
When we're trying to balance that budget.
Oh.
The only other revenue we can find to balance it is small county cert tax. We can't use state revenue sharing or absent sales tax or anything else.
When you say balance that budget, I, I thought, when you say fine and forfeiture, that's just a designation of that funding. What budget is that? Is that just strictly the sheriff's budget?
No, fine and forfeiture is...
That's some of the court and, uh...
The court.
The state's attorney.
Utility services for the jail. The IT for all the courts and the clerk and the public defender, guardian ad litem.
Okay. I, I get what you're saying now. I was just, when you kept saying that budget, was it multiple budgets or one?
It's one fund with different pots of money in it.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything? Everybody content with what we've done?
Other than the sheriff?
He'll get back with us, I got...
Oh, I do have a question. I do have a question, uh, for Eddie. I noticed that on the overtime, uh, we've been, this has been a topic of conversation since I've been on the board, uh, with, uh, with overtime or the fire EMS, and, um, I know that there's a certain amount built in, uh, to each one of your employees, uh, and I guess what I'm, my question is, is, is we budgeted last year about three hundred, was it three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, somewhere in that area, I think, if I remember from looking at it, and then this year, or projected, it's coming in at six, six hundred, almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Have we not fixed, I thought, that's one of the things that we were doing to offset, when we gave the raises, uh, allowed for the raises to, to kind of hopefully keep people in.
Right.
What's causing the overtime to keep going up?
It's, we have, uh, for the last, um, well, since last budget process, we've had on average five or six openings that we haven't been able to fill. We've exhausted the, the local area of folks, for the most part, so applications that we're getting are coming from distance. Some of those, some of those people come in, uh, they're, they're quality employees, you know, as we hire them, but then they get a, a job offer closer to, to where they live, or, uh, or where they want to move back to, and, and some of those have left. Few of the employees that have come in just haven't worked out, um, and, and then we've also had some, some longer, you know, a few longer-term employees that decided to, uh, basically, you know, change, you know, make a career change and, and go into the nursing field. So it's, it's primarily been the turnover that we've had. We're down, we're getting closer to being fully staffed, I anticipate, hopefully by the next couple of months. I, I have a, a stack of applications that have just come in that, that we were getting ready this week to call and get in for interviews, and then the unfortunate situations happen, so it's gonna put on the back burner, but if we can, if we can get to where, where our staffing levels need to be, then we, you know, that's, that's something we'll be able to hopefully reduce.
I know you...
It's, it's just been, it's been the turnover issue is what it is.
I know that you've, you're not able to, to get rid of all of it, obviously, um, but I think if you can carve a couple hundred thousand dollars out of it from one year at a time, then, I mean, that, it wouldn't take long to, to put up a new firehouse.
Right.
So, um, or at least having some money set aside for it.
There, there's a significant ebb and flow, significant ebb and flow in this. I mean, we, we think we're getting close, and then all of a sudden, I'll give you an example, I think at one time, when I talked to Jamie, it was, we were about fifty percent of our fire personnel were, didn't live here. And some of them drove here from South Florida. I remember at lunch one day, I talked to a table full of them, and just went around the table asking, where are you from? I think there were seven of the ten were from, in fact, Eddie, you may have been there that day.
Yes, sir.
About seven out of the ten lived someplace other than Swanee County. Some of them were honest enough to say, well, we can't actually get a job, we don't qualify to be hired in Miami until we can show at least two years or three years' experience someplace. So we will drive from Miami all the way to Swanee County and we'll work, and then turn around and go back home and do this for the next two or three years until we qualify to be hired where we're from. And they do that. And we're talking about fifty percent of our personnel that'll do things like that. I'm thankful that we've been able to keep the number of people that we have, but it's, it's truly a balancing act with those that have to schedule. Eddie, I think, has been handling the majority of that, working with our people, trying to keep the schedules full, but it's a tough job, it really is.
Is that a, when you compare, have you ever looked at the other departments around us, the other county departments around us that have, and compared what they're doing to see, is this something that's across the board, that we're still dealing with all the way across the board?
It's pretty consistent, like this everywhere. Your smaller counties, now, your large counties don't have as big a problem.
They just pay people.
But they're paying a whole lot more than we're paying, you know? The sheriff's talking about trying to compete with the highway patrol. We're competing with the whole state, um, for people coming out of fire college that are cross-trained as well. Our people are cross-trained, so we're trying to steer clear of single cert people, training those that we can, and even, you know, trying to get some of them through the schools to get double certification, the dual certification. But this is, uh, in all of my years dealing with county government, it's always been a problem. Yeah.
And part of it as well, um, I mean, exactly what Mr. Harris just said is, is the problem, but in addition to that, and we went through this, um, early in my career, is the large departments just, just roll a big retirement, you know, a big retirement class, basically, you're, you know, Jacksonville, um, you know, Gainesville, they just hired a bunch, Alachua's got, and Marion, Marion County just opened up like sixty positions. So the larger departments, these folks that live, you know, as Mr. Harris was saying, I, the last time I counted, out of our sixty-five that's on total staff with administration and, and shift personnel, we had eighteen people that lived in Swanee County, but, and that, that was including James and I, and, and the ones that, you know, that were in administration. Another prob, about fifty percent of the department lives in either Swanee, Columbia, Hamilton, you know, the surrounding counties, but the rest of them are driving from Jacksonville, Tallahassee, Ocala. I've got a nineteen-year employee that's driven from Ocala since he's been here. He just likes working here, and, and he, he likes living in Ocala. He's driven that entire time. We've got two right now driving from Miami or Florida. So, um, so, yeah, it's, the retirement issue was also, the big departments have a mass exodus with retirement, so when they hire, they usually, the younger guys, they suck up those smaller departments, those larger, you know, because of salary and also promotion opportunities in those larger departments is, is a lot, a lot better for these young guys.
I have a question, do, do y'all have like a feeder program, or, or, or recruiting program, or like at the, uh, the vocational school that employ, you know, students come out of that feeder program to, to hire into fire rescue?
We don't have a, a, we are working, we've been working on it the last couple of years. We go to every job fair that the, that the VOTAC has, we put a booth up, and, and we, we talk to the students as they're coming through and try to recruit them. You know, you guys were gracious enough to allow us to start sending some folks to school, and if they can come in with one of the certifications, we'll send them to fire school, and we'll send them for, for that retention, and, and also recruitment of, of folks, and that, that's helping. We've got a couple of young, young folks now that are Swanee Countyans that are wanting to come, come work for us, um, and that's what we're, we're really trying to focus, even on, even on a lack of experience, we, we're trying to get local folks that we know that'll stay here, because it's a, it's a big investment for us to bring a firefighter on, so we want to get them to stay, and so we're really working on trying to get these younger, having the, the fire school in Lake City has been a godsend for us. Since they opened that up, um, we've gotten a couple people out of each, each of those classes that have come through, and, and, and they're really instructing the kids well over there. They're coming in, the guys that are getting out of those schools, or out of that school are, are better trained than even what we're getting out of state fire college right now, it's just with the, with the programs that they're doing. So to answer your question, yes, we are actively trying to recruit the, the kids out of high school. We even talked the other day about trying to get a middle school program going to start, you know, hitting them at a younger age and try to really get it in their mind that, that this is something they might want to do.
Do they have interest in it?
Uh, some do, some do, um, some of them, you know, we have a problem with, you know, they're all about being a fireman, but you start talking about the EMS side of it, and they're not so intere, interested, but we do get, we do get, we're getting some interest out of it.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Anything else on the budget? Everybody good? Y'all good? You know, what was our contingency now?
Six forty-one, three thirty-three.
Six, did y'all ever decide?
We haven't addressed the two hundred fifty.
Did y'all want to put any more towards Chipseal? That was the one outstanding question.
What did we put over there, like sixty, or?
So, sir, sorry.
What did we, how much, did we put anything there?
We put five hundred, but we had talked about an additional two fifty.
Additional, what, two fifty?
And you say we had six, what?
Six forty-one.
Three thirty-three.
Six.
We can come up with the roads that he can do, all that in one year, he's still got...
If you wanted to round it off and just give me the one forty-one, three thirty-three, you'd have five hundred in contingency, and that would give me more to work with, unless you just want to go higher than that. It's up to you.
Plus, that's in addition to that one forty-six that you hadn't spent yet.
That'd give us six sixty-one and a five hundred thousand dollar contingency.
Right, that'd give me...
I'm saying, how much would that give us for Chipseal, total?
Six forty-one, three thirty-three.
That's about all we can do anyway, isn't it?
Unless we have some really long roads.
Yeah. Because I've got that plus the sixty-five for the other two Coliseum and Swanee Lake, yeah. If we have good weather...
Yeah, by the time you add in what you put in for those two projects there...
Unless we got the, the projects that aren't done, yeah.
That was another sixty, wasn't it?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Sixty-five, so you're at, you're at seven oh five in Chipseal.
Well, that's, that's not including the one hundred forty-six thousand that you, uh, that we probably won't spend in this year for this year's Chipseal that you're doing?
That does not include that.
That's rolled over, and that's being rolled over to next year.
We'll, we'll roll over what we don't spend. That's, that's correct. So whatever we end up with, we're, we're involved in projects right now.
I think, say, I know we're involved in one project that's probably gonna roll over into the...
Yeah, it'll carry us over.
It's gonna roll over. We're talking about six hundred forty-one thousand dollars in new, all in new.
Correct, that's correct.
Great, five hundred thousand.
It would be that plus any balance left over.
You're looking at seven hundred and five total on Chipseal projects, new monies, not counting the rollover, that's gonna be ate up within a couple of months on the projects.
Yeah.
And that was, uh, that was including that sixty-five thousand.
Yes.
All right, I'm good with it.
That's, that's gonna be more we can do, or...
Yeah.
His chip still matches our contingency.
Say that again?
It just happened that way.
I don't know how you do it.
But...
I don't know how you do it, Randy.
I know it, I just stay up at night, working on it.
So instead of the two fifty, we're giving you one forty-one, three thirty-three.
Right, to add to my five, and that makes it to six forty-one, three thirty-three.
You're even five in your budget.
That's correct.
So we're gonna transfer another one forty-one, three thirty-three.
That's correct. And then...
And that's two fifty.
When the sheriff comes back with his pencil, you'll be back to eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Would y'all say four hundred?
Four.
So we have an even five hundred thousand left in contingency.
For now.
Yeah, because...
We got rid of the thirty-three.
Once I go back through these notes, we hope we have five hundred thousand, I'll shoot for it.
One question for you, Mr. Harris, that I forgot to ask.
No.
No, 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 no. We talked about this back a while back, about the striping on one thirty-six, and I noticed that you added that, you added about thirty thousand dollars to your, your line striping. Is that, you think that'll cover, uh, some of our problem areas?
Well, it's gonna help us. Well, it's going to help us. We will always, we always have the ability to spend more than we're going to fund.
Yeah.
So, it's, it'll help. It'll help.
137 is just a, I think it's 137, yeah. Right, north and south is just a-
Well, when the southern portion gets as bad as the north portion, you won't have to worry about striping, because you're lucky to find the other part of the lane. I mean, the north end of 137 is just broken off and sinking into the swamp.
The riding bridge is added to this, transferred out.
Have you heard, this has nothing to do with the budget. Have you heard when Jenkins may be in to scrape those, so we can scrape those rumble strips off of 136?
I haven't gotten an update on that.
Working on it tomorrow.
We'll find out. She's going to, Debbie's going to call Mike.
Yeah, just let me know, because I need a, I got somebody that's calling about it. I need to give an update on it.
Right.
It might be, we've, once we got the quote on that, we decided it might be cheaper if we buy new shocks for that person's car.
Might be. It's not just that one, though. They put those in way too high years before I got on the board. We cut them down once, but they're still, they're still too high.
We're going to have to get Lamar's new number, because he didn't have his raises in there.
He didn't have his raises in there.
Was he going to give you a new number, turn in a new budget, or?
He didn't have the raises in, but we usually have to send them something to amend that. An email, I'll send him an email letting him know. And that budget amendment that he was going to need for 13,000.
We'll have to give him a letter.
Also, I'm pretty sure that they budgeted in, had the old numbers on the insurance. So, that should offset it a little bit, but not by a lot.
So, that'll change the half a million a little bit.
By a little.
Hope that the insurance offsets whatever he sends us up on raises, on all of it?
No, because he ain't got enough employees to, and some of them aren't, aren't on the county insurance. It's only about a $300 offset. Even if at, even at 20 employees, that ain't going to be enough to offset that.
Glenn can take care of that.
So, once you get your books, I guess we won't decide anything else till the third, the tentative hearing. You'll have your books-
Unless y'all want to talk about it again at the next board meeting, you think you can, whatever you're going to do, Sheriff, by our next board meeting, have some of those numbers down? Y'all want to just put a spot on the agenda to workshop it? It don't have to be any earlier. I'm just-
When's the next board meeting?
On a Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
It is next Tuesday.
I think it is.
Not tomorrow.
That's a week from tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Next, yeah, next Tuesday.
20th.
I'll, I'll start working on these, we'll have these changes done this week, and then y'all can get your books.
You want us to leave the books? I want to drop them off.
You want to leave yours today?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Could you carry it out to her car, please?
Yeah, I can.
We've got a basket.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify one thing that, to all those here today and to all those watching on the video feed, that I'm not in support of you raising that mileage rate.
Oh, I am not either. That was an example. That was just an example.
Mr. Chairman, we're appealing to you to not raise it to 10 mils.
Exactly.
I'll go ahead and say-
I used both sides of that, the up and down. I was just giving you an example.
That's one thing you will not be able to go back in the minutes and find, is me, I'm, you won't ever find it where I made a motion to up it, ever. Seconded it or voted on it.
Sad it anyway.
I gave an example. That was all it was.
Things can be mistrue. We've seen that happen in the past.
It's not about what's true, it's about what they believe.
It's all about perception.
Yeah. It's true.
All right. Anything else?
I just want to say thank you to everybody here, all you guys working with us. I know we asked a lot of y'all to sharpen those pencils, and we chew on you about it, but we appreciate it. We're just trying to do the right thing ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate everybody, especially under the circumstances, difficult times. But we had a job to do, and I think everybody come together and worked together, and we got it done. I would just get through a couple more, another workshop on it, and then a couple hearings, and we'll put it behind us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I could, I just want to tell Nina one more time how much we appreciate her. She, she's always in the hot seat when we do these things. She's, she's the one that has to try to keep up with all, everybody's thoughts and intentions and philosophies, and it's kind of tough to do.
Only thing that gave us a holdup this year is the 170. Other than that, I'm good with everything.
You mention that one more time, I got to buy you lunch.
I only got one more time.
I said if it gets mentioned 12 times, I'll buy your lunch, that's number 11.
Well, she, she's been taking the heat.
Who's going to buy whose lunch?
For her and for Keith, so.
It's all about 170.
We're pretty confident that Commissioner Richardson isn't going to buy it.
All right, well, if there's nothing else.
I would, I would just like to say, keep the Summers family in your prayers. I mean, we, we lost a great leader here, and it's, 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 it's been tough on everyone, but it's sure enough fixing to hit home here in the next 24 hours. And we just gotta, gotta keep pushing forward, and we gotta do what he was trying to do for all of us, and that is make Swanee County a better place. And it's just a tough, tough situation for everybody. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I sentiment, sentiment the same thing. Let's keep the Summers family, Fire Department, Fire Rescue, all the county employees, the whole county as a whole, pray you one for another, and also the Hill family, you know, the children. I had the opportunity to go and visit with the children, and I know it's not going to be easy. I've sat in that situation, and most recently with my, with my sister. I still can't believe it, it's been about eight months, and it's still hard to believe that, that, that I had just saw her. But that's how things happen. But I know that she wouldn't want to come back, and those that's gone on. But it don't change the situation, it don't change the hurt, nor do it change the pain. The older that I get, I think about that, you know, how things going to turn out. And we as parents and grandparents, you have a tendency to think about your children, your grandchildren, you think about your mom, you think about your siblings. For the, for the last couple of weeks, we've been traveling. I leave on a Friday, a Thursday, and come back Saturday afternoon to come back to work. And I kind of, kind of dreaded that, and because of what happened last week, it, it really, really put a strain on me on driving and the places that I went, down to Orlando, down to St. Pete. And those crazy drivers, how they drive down there, it made me just say no. But because of the commitment, it reminded me of what we had in loyalty and devotion in our Sunday school yesterday. Because of the loyalty and devotion to the family and to the vacation, I did it. And I thank God that he brought us all back safe. Everybody can't say that. But my heart just go out, and, and on the last Tuesday night, my heart was just so heavy. And the way I felt about, the way I feel about Jamie, that's all I'm going to say, because it's still there.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say one thing to everybody in the room, from our department to everybody in here, every department head, Swanee County as a community, but we've had every, every single department head, every single agency within the city, the county, outside counties, everybody reaching out and, and asking us, and, and willing to do anything. And to make sure that James is honored in the, in the way that he, he deserves it. And I've got a long list and a whole bunch of thank yous, and, and some special stuff to do for a handful of people that have been just above and beyond that, that, that we've got to do to, to thank everybody. But from all of our guys at Fire Rescue, thank you from the bottom of our heart for everything that each one of you has done. Sharon, thank you for sending the work crew out today to wash all the vehicles. Our guys would have done it, but it just took that extra little bit of workload off of them, because they've been working nonstop, daylight. There's been a lot of guys that haven't gone home until 3:00 a.m. every day since, since the accident happened, to make sure that this thing goes off like it should. And it's going to be an amazing day tomorrow, as bad as of a, of a situation that it is, he is going to be smiling down on us, I can promise you, because it's, it's going to honor him very, very well. Thank you.
And I think I'm the only one that's on this board that had part in, in hiring Mr. Summers.
Oh, I'd have to disagree with you there, sir. That was my very first board meeting.
Okay, okay.
How about that?
You and I, you and I.
He was the, he was the interim chief.
Yes.
And the night that I got sworn in and Commissioner Bishaw got sworn in, it was not on the agenda.
Yeah.
And at the end of that board meeting, I believe, at Commissioner Comment time, Commissioner Bishaw said, "Why don't we go ahead and clean this up and make, make it permanent, and make our, Mr. Summers our chief?" And the board voted to do it. So, he was there seven years, and I've been on the board, or as chief, and I've been on the board now seven years. Very first meeting.
Commissioner Fleming, I will say this, I just thought of something, when you was speaking a minute ago, and you was talking about your sister's service. I remember that day, me and Mr. Norris went to the service, and we were sitting there, and sure enough, he walked through, Mr. Summers sat right there beside me in that service. And just come back to me thinking about it there.
Like Mr. Eddie has said, this community has been amazing, not only department heads, but you know, everyone has reached out to both sides of that family, and it's just been, it's, it makes you proud to be where you are, where you live, where you're from. Absolutely.
Now, I will tell you, Eddie, he's looking down right now, saying, "Don't think it's going to be this easy every year," because we, we dang sure had-
We've had very much.
Well, we had some, we had, we did have, we did have some clashes over the budget, over the years.
Yeah, we did.
But I will say, and we were talking about it in the hall, the board challenged James just about every budget year on the different things that he was wanting to do and wanting to accomplish. And we never put the brakes on him, we just said, "Figure out a way to do it with less money." And him, and you, and Mr. Harris, they'd go back to the, to the drawing board every year, and we, just about everything they wanted to accomplish, we accomplished, and it usually come back at, where we got it done, in, in a better way. Not saying that it was a bad way the first time, but it was just, it'd always come back. He got creative, or did what he needed to do, and I, I can't remember the exact thing, but last year, I said, "Well, we had to stop and punt." And he said, "A punt? Hell, that was a fumble."
I remember that.
You remember that?
I remember that, yeah.
But, anyone else?
I, I just wanted to say, for those of you who I told, if you heard my prayer, mentioned my mother, she, this past weekend, we got a scare from now both mothers, mother-in-law and my mother. My mother-in-law, we had a scare this past weekend about pancreatic cancer. And thankfully, it wasn't even anywhere near, it was a pulled muscle. So, it's a good thing. And then my mother went in last night, the emergency room, for what, what looked like an obvious or an apparent heart attack. And thankfully, it was, again, nothing. It's likely a pulled muscle or, or something else, but nothing like that. So, it doesn't matter really what it comes out to be, as long as it's not something that's major like that. And just thank you for the thoughts, those who said they prayed for.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Everybody good?
Good.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, were you, did you want for us to put on the next agenda a continuation of conversation on the-
Yes, yeah. We can do that in the meeting, can't we? Can't we just-
Yeah, I'll just identify it in the meeting, and-
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to show up 30 minutes early or anything like that. Just do it in the meeting.
We'll just put in there a continuation of budget workshop.
That way, we don't have to do it all at the, I'd like, by the time we get to the tentative and the final this year, to have it wrapped up, where we can just approve it and move on, instead of trying to make last-minute changes.
Okay.
That'll make your life easier.
Mm-hmm. We'll let Bo talk for three minutes, and that'll be it. Thank you, thank you, Bo.
That's the first.
Will you, will you step up to the mic and say that again?
We need that for the record.
Put that in a minute.
Make sure this makes it in the-
I'm walking back.